Good evening. Good evening, and welcome to this, the November 13th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting to order. Let the roll call show that all of the members of the council are present and accounted for. I ask you to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Juniper, United States of America, two republics, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. See, there was no reportable action in the closed session, so moving on to proclamations and presentations, we have the Human Services Commission Annual Update. Good evening.
Good evening.
You guys are doing great things.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, first off, good evening, Mayor Marchand and council members. My name is Eric Hom, and I'm the current Chair for the Human Services Commission here for the city of Livermore. First off, want to thank the entire council for your committed service to our wonderful Livermore community. First, regarding the Human Services Commission, just a quick financial update. In fiscal year 2016-17, the council allocated $751,706,000 to 15 public and community-based organizations. This allocation supported 22 programs that provided assistance to over 10,000 low-income Livermore individuals and households. In the same fiscal year, the city of Livermore leveraged an additional $476,714 of federal funding through two programs, the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership Program. Through the CGB funds, $366,714 were allocated, and through the home program, $110,000 in funding was allocated. In addition, $275,000 was allocated from local city funding sources, such as the Social Opportunity Endowment Fund and the INLU and Human Services Facility Fee Funding. Through these funding, through these fundings, programs funded included legal services, meals for frail homebound seniors, housing of 18 formerly homeless persons through the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program for homeless persons and those at risk of homelessness, case management services for disabled youth and adults to assist with life skills and independent living skills, and the Fair Housing Counseling Services and Tenant-Landlord Dispute Resolution. I want to say I've thoroughly enjoyed my time on the Human Services Commission, being on the commission since April 2016. The commission's goal is to take a more proactive approach and strategic approach to allocating funding to Livermore grant recipients, which places more focus on agency accountability to ensure services and resources are being delivered to those in the community who need them the most. Each commissioner will have an area of focus, such as housing, food programs and resources, medical and dental programs, youth services, and senior programs. So in closing, again, truly humbled to be able to serve this city, and thank you for your time.
Any questions for Human Services? You did a great job leveraging those funds, it's a tremendous amount of need, and certainly appreciate the time and effort to do to serve this community.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we have the confirmation of advisory body appointments and reappointment in administration of the oath of office to new members. So we have the appointment for the Commission of the Arts of Nanad Desai. We have the Housing Authority Appointment of Mark Palajak. See here? Oh, there he is, Mark, there, right there. And then Human Services Commission John Oriana, and the reappointment of Nabila Khan. So if Nanad Desai, Mark Palajak, and John Oriana will please step up. Oh, that's right. Do I have a motion to approve the appointments?
I'll also move.
Second?
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Warner, seconded by Councilmember Recumber. All in favor?
Aye.
It passed unanimously. So please come up and receive the oath of office.
(inaudible)
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 (applause)
And thank you very much for volunteering to dedicate your time to serve this community. I greatly appreciate it, and the community appreciates it as well. Thank you. Okay, so, how do you like it? This is, this is No Shave November. I know, Jay, you didn't notice it. So, there's another gentleman out there sporting a fine set of chin whiskers. I'd like to call Chief Mike Harris up to the podium to make a few comments about what this is all about.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I've bitten a few double takes lately, but it's all for a good cause. The Livermore Police Officers Association has facilitated, in partnership with the school district, a program called Shop with a Cop for a number of years. And it's a program where students who are in financial need are selected, and they meet up with police officers, and they take them out and they shop with them, and they get, they had been able to spend $150 on holiday gifts for themselves or their family members, and then they're taken out to eat, and then they wrap the presents and they take them home. So it's a great program, and they wanted to serve more kids, and so they were looking for ways to, to raise some funds, and they came up with this idea of No Shave November. So it's, it's been well received, so if you see officers out there, it's not that they, they were running late for work and forgot to shave or something like that, they are all doing it for a good cause, and we appreciate you, your support as well. So thank you.
Absolutely. And if anybody wishes to support the effort, they can go to the GoFundMe site, gofundme/liv shopwithacop.
That's right.
So it's GoFundMe, L-I-V, shopwithacop, and it's a great effort, and great to, to police officers stepping forward. By the way, there's also, there's a giving tree as well.
Yes.
So when does that program start?
So it's up, it's up, it's in the lobby at the Police Department right now.
Okay.
So it'll be up for about another month, or maybe a little bit longer than that, maybe six weeks, and people can come in and get a tag off the tree, and then bring a gift back, and we get folks that, again, similar financial need, and distribute those gifts ahead of Christmas.
Great. And, and the gifts that the, you could, as I said, you go into the lobby of the Police Department, and there's a Christmas tree, there are tags on the Christmas tree, and these are things like shoes.
Yeah.
A warm jacket, pants. So it's things that the people very deeply need, and I'm very proud to support the police officers and their efforts to continue to serve this community, and they're doing a great job, so, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, moving on to Citizens Forum. These are items that are not on the agenda. The city council can neither deliberate nor take action on anything that's brought up during the Citizens Forum. And just before I forget, I'm going to reorder the agenda so that 6.02, which is the, the issue regarding the handicap parking, will move that up and have the KFR afterward. 6.01 will follow 6.02. Okay? So with that, Citizens Forum, these are items that are not on the agenda, and I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. We have David McGuigan, Julie, and Chris Damits. Mr. McGuigan.
I'd like to draw your attention to this article from the East Bay Express from February this year. It's titled, "Previous Allegations of Misconduct May Be Excluded in Ex Livermore Cop's Sex Crime Trial," and was written by Darwin Brookbontham and Ally Winston. In the article, they discuss the prior complaints registered against ex-officer Black that Mayor Marchand went way out of his way to deny to the prosecution. These include a child custody dispute from July 2010, allegations from two separate women in February of 2011, one for having sex with someone and recording it without their permission, and the other for having sex with someone under the influence, which is often a euphemism for passed out, and a February 2016 suspected child abuse report. Now, ignoring the inherent conflict of interest in a child custody dispute, I have to believe any of the other three, if properly investigated, should have left his, led to his dismissal from the force. But instead, we have the standard Livermore, cover it up and lie about it. Clearly, this is the kind of quality individual that Livermore strives to keep on their police force, covering up his transgressions at least four separate times, the last mere months before he became embroiled in a scandal that the chief couldn't cover up by himself. And that's when the mayor stepped up and refused to prosecute the reports of his prior transgressions, continuing the strong tradition of covering up the traditions by suppressing them in the court, helping put him back on the street and potentially back in uniform. And as if these morally reprehensible actions weren't bad enough, the mayor has repeatedly lied about it, telling people there were no allegations of child abuse against ex-officer Black. Well, John Marchand, Mayor of Livermore, if on the bizarro planet you come from, a suspected child abuse report is not an allegation of child abuse, just what is it?
Thank you. That was, that was good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Julie, Chris Damits, Jeff Caskey.
(laughing)
It's okay, it does that.
Sorry.[840.44][840.44](laughing)
It does that.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Julie, and I was calling, I'm here to talk on behalf of the handicap parking, and how there's not enough in the town of Livermore. I'm just going to use one example, which actually just happened to have happened tonight. I was, I came here early, and I parked in a handicap parking spot out here, and I was just waiting for the doors open, and someone came in, and they put their high beams on at me for like probably 30 seconds to maybe a minute, and then they drove around and did their own thing, but I know that, you know, when I'm sitting in my car, it doesn't look like I'm handicapped, but I am evidently, but the reason why I'm bringing it up is, is that we don't have enough handicap parking out here and around Livermore itself. So that's all I just wanted to share.
Thank you. Bob, got it? Okay, good. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Chris Damits, Jeff Caskey, Bill Dunlop.
Good evening. My name's Chris. I have some visual aids that I can pass out if necessary, but...
If you could hand us the city clerk, please?
Sure. I live off of Alexander Street, near Granada High School, and I have some pretty bad raised sidewalk in the front yard, or off of the front yard, and due to the proximity to the high school, it's particularly a public safety hazard. I have been in contact with Juan Vargas at the city's engineering department, and I think earlier this year, back in January or February, I notified them, the city came out and sprayed it, marked it, but I hadn't heard anything, so back in October, I contacted Juan again, and it was kind of vague, the answer that I got, but essentially, he said that there's no money for the sidewalk repair program, and the waitlist to get any of the work done would be over three years-ish. So I, given that this program, it's much more lucrative to the homeowner to do that, the maximum you pay out of pocket if you get the work done through the Livermore incentive is, I think, $2,100. I've gotten a quote, and it's going to be upwards of $6,000 if I were to pay that out of pocket, which I can't afford. So I was wondering, what, are there other cases like this? Is there any priority list for that program? Is there any plans for diverting some tax dollars in this current year to go to that program? Or I guess what's the best course of action for me right now, moving forward?
Okay, this is a great start, because we've got Paul Spence here with Community Development, and if you could get this, if you could give the gentleman your contact information, and he can be in touch with you and work through whatever we can do.
Okay. Great. So, okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, I think my comments would make more sense if I followed Bill Dunlop, if that would be all right?
Oh, okay. Sure. Bill Dunlop, Jeff Caskey, Alan Frank.
Good. Bill Dunlop, St. Helena Court, it's not very long, so the address is almost, doesn't matter. Anyway, I believe that bringing Livermore together on a plan for the downtown is what the city council should focus on. Lee Yonker has given me a statement to read tonight, one that I hardly agree with. After several months of activities by a steering committee and extensive effort at the community outreach, Livermore citizens remain divided on the plans for downtown development. Indeed, if anything, opinions have become more entrenched and in some cases more polarized around possible paths forward. Actions taken in the, in the next few weeks will largely determine if the polarization and divisive views persist, or whether the community can come together on an inspiring plan for Livermore, a plan that most can get behind. The debate has coalesced around the hotel location. While there are many reasons for the increased polarization, I believe that a major contributor is the fact that both sides have stated, and largely unstated and unexamined reasons for their positions. As long as important factors in the decision process remain below the surface and unaddressed, the community will likely stay divided. All of the arguments and concerns on all sides of the issues have to be vetted, examined, and analyzed if the community is to come together on a plan. Proponents for plans based on the West Side hotel location argue that this location is much better suited for activating the downtown square and providing convenient parking next to the Bankhead Theater and minimizing traffic flow problems. Below the surface, this group is concerned that starting with an East Side hotel could likely lead to backing into a West Side dominated by housing similar to the plan rejected in last year's city election. They also believe that parking next to the Bankhead to serve theater patrons, East Side business customers, handicapped and service vehicles and garage, and garbage trucks are very important. Proponents of an East Side hotel cite their priority, or their primary reason, proximity to the Bankhead Theater, early visibility on Livermore Avenue, and amount of planning that has gone into the hotel on the East Side. These arguments do not seem to be as compelling, particularly given that there is little to no mention of how the community priorities of an activated town square, limited housing, and distributed parking will be achieved in the overall plan. It appears that advocacy for an East Side hotel is largely driven by an underlying belief that it can move along more quickly. If citizens of Livermore are to come together and get behind a plan for the downtown, important topics like timing and financial feasibility, what happens to the West Side if we start with the East Side, and will there be a developer available for the West Side hotel need to be examined and openly discussed? And I thoroughly agree with the statement by Lee, and we would like to see the city look at some of these important factors. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dunlop. Jeff Caskey, Alan Frank, Greg Scott.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As was noted, thank you for rearranging. In the downtown conversation, we finally have a good understanding of the primary motivations of the various entrenched positions. Many put a value on an inviting town square, activated with retail, restaurants, and a hotel, and they largely want a hotel on the West Side of Livermore Avenue to support that vibrant space. Those whose main interest is in getting the hotel as quickly as possible believe the East Side is the way to get there. Fortunately, it looks like there is a good path forward. Not a compromise, but a synthesis. A West Side hotel built quickly while maintaining reasonable parking and on a reasonable budget. I'll give the details to the city clerk, but the general idea is that a West Side hotel and the adjacent Village Green can be built by reorganizing parking on the city land west of Livermore Avenue. In addition, city land east of Livermore Avenue and north of the bakery could be equally reorganized. The West Side hotel would incorporate all of its own parking. This compares well with the East Side hotel, which needs the delay and $16.2 million expense of the I Street Garage before it can move forward. Also, because the East Side hotel needs costly underground parking, as well as handicap parking at another location, a West Side hotel would be cheaper. I'm asking council to ask staff to review the parking plan prepared by International Parking Design out of Oakland, who was the community group's experienced parking consultant. Their analysis shows that the spaces are available, and they're finalizing their drawings to show that to the city. We'll get that to you very shortly. I ask that city council ask staff to provide a report confirming this conclusion before the November 27th council meeting. We request that their report be shown to those who support both the East Side and the West Side hotel location. We believe that advocates on both sides would begin to support each other's goals, a speedy hotel construction, and a Village Green that inspires the community, all at a cost that is practical for the city. For a number of citizens, the council meeting on November 27th could be the beginning of a new conversation. Thank you very much, and I will give this to the clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Caskey.
Thank you.
Alan Frank, Greg Scott, and then we have a LYSCO board member. Mr. Frank?
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and city council members. The great success of the downtown has made accessibility increasingly difficult for the handicapped. Once a weekly tradition, my wife and I no longer even think about having dinner downtown because of accessibility issues. I was dismayed when at one of the recent town meetings, the architect of the four development concepts admitted that no consideration was given to handicapped access in any of the designs. There are no handicapped spaces on First Street, none. The few spaces on the side streets added as an afterthought were considered adequate at the time of the downtown redevelopment. They are now grossly inadequate, even when taking into account those spaces that have been added on private property. There are several places along First Street where a few feet of green space or bicycle parking could be shared with a ramp and an adjacent parking space reserved for handicap parking. Greatly expanded parking in the super block, albeit temporary, is heavily used, but no spaces are marked for handicap parking. Why can't some of these spaces be reserved right now for handicap parking, especially in areas close to Livermore Avenue and the pass-through to First Street? All that is needed are some signs and restriping in the already paved areas. Handicapped access to the Bankhead and movie theaters has never been properly addressed. The closest parking in the garage is actually a city block from the entrance to either theater. The three spaces in the lot to the west of the Bankhead were designed for the office complex above SOST. At theater times, they are usually filled with restaurant patrons. At lunchtimes, these spaces are often blocked by delivery vans. I would recommend three additional spaces be added at the east end of the lot, as well as a ramp directly accessing the Bankhead Plaza. I applaud the concept of using the space between the Bankhead and Cream for a handicapped-only parking, as the few spaces in the parking garage are often full. The several trackside spaces in the garage are too far away to be useful for most handicapped patrons of the theaters. Also, the crossing of Railroad Avenue is extremely dangerous for a slow-moving person using a walker or crutches. Granted, any parking areas considered for future development may be temporary. However, the need for parking, especially handicap parking, is real and immediate. Future development, in some cases the far future, will of necessity have to take this into consideration. What I'm asking are simple, inexpensive steps to remediate the present situation. I also implore the city planners to actively consider handicapped accessibility at all phases of the development, not as an afterthought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Mr. Scott, then we have a LYSCO board member, a trip leader, and a student delegate. Mr. Scott?
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and Livermore City Council and City of Livermore staff. I am Greg Scott. I met with the city on, with a community member and three city staff on October 25th in regards to the homeless issue. My main thing in the meeting was to open up channels of communication and to put your new employees with the Human Services Division in contact with Donna and Bob McKenzie, who are on the front lines of the homeless issue. The homeless issue problem is just burgeoning in this town. I am grateful for the Human Services Commission and their $751,000 that they raised in a year for the 22 programs for 10,000-plus low-income people. That works out to $75 per person, if my math is correct. The problem is getting worse out there. We need to address it in a better way. We just had Veterans Day. We have veterans that are homeless in this town that have been homeless for years. It's unacceptable. I understand, we have a Veterans Administration Hospital close to us here. I understand the Veterans Hospital is not under the jurisdiction of the city council, but the Veterans Administration has a housing referral person. If they have a housing referral person, why are there homeless veterans on the street of Livermore that have been there for years? It's, it's wrong. Something's very wrong out there. I'm having a meeting with a community member and the city staff and the city police on this Wednesday. We look forward to that and to making progress there. If, you know, if we go outside on a clear day and midday, and we can't decide the sky is blue, we have a problem. We have a communication problem, and we need to understand why there's two different stories on an issue, and empathize with each other, and come to some understanding. It's, the, the idea is not to be combative, the idea is to get some solutions to a serious problem here. One, you know, if, if we have these $366,000 in community block development grants, and this, we do have resources to do something. Wow, three minutes. It's just, it's, you know, I, I just think of the thought of this homeless woman, I tried to find her a shelter, and the city staff helped, and I didn't find her shelter, I got her sleeping bag. I got her a sleeping bag, and I just think of the question, would any of us be okay if our mothers were out on the street all night, unsheltered in Livermore? Our daughters, or sisters, or grandmothers? I mean, the situation is unacceptable. I'm glad for what people are doing, but it's not enough. It's out of control, and we need to do better, and I hope to help the city do better.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. If I could just make a brief comment. The VA Hospital has been trying to close the hospital, the VA has been trying to close the hospital for about eight years now, and I've been fighting for eight years to keep it open, to serve our veterans, who, there's over 12,000 veterans in the Tri-Valley. And some cities have been able to leverage VA Hospital land to provide veteran housing, and this is a conversation that I've been having with the VA. When we had our homeless survey, it turned out that we identified a number of veterans that were homeless, and we found out that fewer than 10% of the veterans that were homeless were receiving the benefits that they were entitled to. So, one of the initiatives, one of the goals of that outreach was to get them in touch and to tie them in with the resource that they were entitled to, because they were not, they had not signed up for them. So, it's connecting them to the resources that are already existing, and that's going to be absolutely key, is how do we leverage these resources and how do we get the most benefit? But what was absolutely key was to have them sign up for the benefits, and I said, 90, over 90% weren't getting the benefits that they were entitled to. So, connecting them with the resources, making those connections is going to be very important to solve this problem. At the Kaufman Foundation Conference that I was at two weeks ago, I brought this up as a subject that needed to be solved, and one of the people that was working with us came up with a great, a great visual on this, and he says, "There's no silver bullet. What we're looking for is silver buckshot. It's going to take a lot of little things to solve this. Not going to be one big bullet. It's going to be lots of little pieces of buckshot that are going to solve this problem, and we're committed to solve this and work together." So, thank you for bringing this up to the council. We have a LYSCO board member, LYSCO trip leader, oh, by the way, that's Livermore-Yotsukito Sister City Organization, and we have one of the board members, we have a trip leader, a student delegate, and another student delegate.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand, City Council, and staff. My name is Lesley Lemieux. I'm the vice president of the Livermore-Yotsukito Sister City Organization, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. We are just back from Japan in October. A group of about 35 of us went, and I've been involved with the program since about 2010, when my eighth-grade daughter first went, and I've been the vice president since about 2012. This year is our 40th anniversary of the Sister City Organization. The city of Yotsukito is a city much like Livermore, about the same distance from Tokyo as we are from San Francisco. We've done a student trip for about, I'm not exactly sure, I think, since 2001, a little bit before my time, but we just wanted to come and share the great news with you that this is our 40th anniversary. We had a great celebration in October when we were in Yotsukito. Mr. Warner was with us and his wife. We had a great dinner, and the mayor of Yotsukito was there, and the superintendent of schools. So, we are going to be inviting all of you to join us on March 17 of 2018, as we celebrate the 40th anniversary on this side. We'll have a fun reception dinner, just like we did there. The Sister City Organization creates great opportunities for long-term friendships and relationships. I'm friends today with many people in Yotsukito as a result of my involvement with this organization. My first host students were two young men. They're now in college, and thanks to social media and email, we often stay in contact with each other, and I'll be seeing one of them in December here in Livermore. So, we just want to thank you as a City Council for the support with the partnership, and of course, we would welcome any of you to come to our events, and you'll be receiving invitations, and we appreciate the support of the city in the Sister City relationship. Thank you for your time tonight.
And what was the date on that?
It's March 17, 2018, and the 20 students will be here with their delegation on March 13 through the 20. So, they'll be here for the entire week. The reception dinner is on the 17th, but you'll be getting invitations.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We next have the trip leader, a student delegate one, and student delegate two.
Hi, my name is Mary Cladino, and I've been fortunate enough to travel with the students from the Livermore-Yotsukito Sister City Association for the past two years. In 2016, my daughter was selected as a student ambassador, and I was traveling as a chaperone. The impact of that trip on the students was truly remarkable, so much so that I jumped at the opportunity to become more involved and traveled in 2017 as a trip leader for the student group. I think that the city would want to be involved and support an organization that offers such a life-changing experience for their students. Not only are their eyes open to another culture, but their sense of community impact begins. They are ambassadors for their family, their school, their city, and their communities. While LYSCO is not directly affiliated with the Livermore City Government, I can see that it can be beneficial to both organizations. It'd be wonderful if the city could give some financial support to the organization for the 40th anniversary celebration that is being planned to celebrate the relationship between those two cities. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a student delegate number one and student delegate number two.
Good evening. My name is Jacque Martin, and I went on the trip this year in October. I went to Japan in October, and I witnessed many new things and met many new people. Some experience that I was lucky enough to have were that I was able to experience a whole new and different culture. I was able to learn new ways of thinking and how the Japanese live their lives. And lastly, I was able to find new skills and try new foods that I would have never been able to find out about myself if I didn't go on this life-changing experience. I am really excited for when the Japanese students come in March, because they will be able to experience what I was lucky enough to experience when I went to Japan in October. It would be very helpful if the city of Livermore was able to give some funds to LYSCO for when the Japanese students come in March, so that they can go through the same experience that I was able to go through. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we have the LYSCO delegate number two, Connie Cops, and Gopal Chikam.
My name is Annabelle Overholt, and I was lucky enough to go on the 2017 LYSCO Sister City trip to Yotsukito, Japan. I experienced many different experiences throughout this trip, such as visiting an old Japanese town, making traditional paper and candles. We also experienced going to school, which was my favorite part. The boys and girls were squealing as soon as we walked to the door, because they've never seen foreigners before, and it was a very different experience for them. The smallest gesture that we made got them so excited, and they were so supportive and playful, as were the teachers. The trip was a once-in-a-lifetime experience, and I am thankful I got to go on it. I hope many more people get to experience what I did, and I hope that this can continue for many more years.
Annabelle, thank you. Well done.
So, can I say something?
Absolutely.
So, I just wanted to say, I had the, it was a real privilege to go on the trip, and I want to thank the mayor for nominating me to do that and for LYSCO having me come along, and it was truly a great experience. I didn't know what I was getting myself in for, but living with a host family is a lot different than any kind of travel I've ever done, and it was really good. And watching the kids kind of get into this new environment was also really a pleasure to watch that. So, I hope that, I think in the past, we've supported the LYSCO organization in the economic downturn. We kind of backed off on that, but I think for the 40th, it would be a good idea. And, you know, the only downside is I had to carry a lot of stuff back and forth, you know, for presents and everything, and I had to bring back the sake for the mayor, but I haven't had my taste of that yet.
We'll get there. It's still there. Absolutely. Great. It is, it's a wonderful program. We will continue that. We have Connie Cops, Gopal Chikam, and Jean King.
Mayor, Council, staff, I'm going to talk probably about three things. One thing that I really want to really bring your attention to is sometimes our agenda gets pretty loaded, and this agenda happened to change kind of at the last minute. I was reading the agenda, and I was reading something about our records-keeping, which is atrocious. We need to fix that somehow in our city. But when I went back to visit our agenda, I thought a couple hours would do it today, but then, really, on the ninth, the agenda was revised, so that, you know, there's an additional 300 pages that, you know, unless you have that block of time, you're probably not going to be able to inform yourself well enough to be a concerned citizen in a timely manner. So, I really want you to think about that. The other thing I really want to bring up is the last few times that I've come and spoke, I know I'm all over the place sometimes, but I really felt that our listening skills turned what I said around. As you know, I'm passionate about Springtown and a few other things, and I just feel that what I was, what I said in like two times that I talked, just the last few times, I was not heard, and I felt like maybe our listening skills need to improve. I'm really concerned about, you know, the history of Springtown and some other things, and I just think that I have a right to these feelings. I read up on the, you know, the history myself, and when I did bring up that, there were things that weren't meshing, and there, you know, there are things that are on, that are of record, that are important, that really affect the real estate, and I think that more respect really should be given to that, because it does affect people's real estate. Now, I'm not exactly sure when the parks is, are going to present to you their findings with the people that, the organization that is, has brought up the designs for the potential park, but I really want to, it could have been buried in today's, you know? That's how overwhelmed I was trying to decipher this agenda that was changed on the ninth, and because Friday was a holiday, Veterans Day, you know, I just did not have a significant block of time to really digest the information, and I think that's unfair. Another thing going forward, I really think that the way Springtown's been handled, I know I'm all over the place, has been inconsiderate. In one case in point, that golf course, just from my organization that I belong to myself, you know, are the Eagles, you know, we raised a lot of money, you know, on golf tournaments. So, you know, I mean, there's a lot of factors that just aren't getting the attention they deserve when we're confronting these issues. And one thing, if I could just have another second, a case in point with the homeless, you know, so much is in our faith, you know, with the homeless situation, you know, we rely a lot on our faith-based population. Maybe if we got a better, a bigger umbrella over that, it would be more inclusive. We have atheists in our, in our city, and it's not for me, but, you know, we really need to have every human being in Livermore think about these issues, and we shouldn't put it so much on our, in our faith. We should get them under one umbrella, so our resources are targeted. Thank you. I know I went past my minute, and I really, three minutes, and I appreciate that extension. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cops. Gopal Chikam, sorry, and Jean King. Was that close?
Hi, I'm Gopal. Good evening, everyone. Livermore City Council. Basically, we are from Vinyard Crossing Community, a newly formed residential area with about 250-plus families and kids, with new houses within last one year or so. We face a huge traffic on Bressa Street, especially traffic from trucks that take the Bressa Street. So, the case in point here is, as per the city guidelines and map, the trucks are not supposed to take the Bressa Street, rather, they should prefer Las Positas Road or Patterson Pass Road to go to their respective company or industry. With the current street noise, about 150-plus homes, including Bressa Street, Bressa Street facing and the houses behind the Bressa Street, on both sides, having very bad living experience in our homes, and also, our kids are not sleeping well due to the high truck traffic noise. Whenever a truck passes by, we notice our houses are shaking because of the noise generated by them, which is not good for our foundation of our homes as well. So, we kindly urge and request all the decision-makers to think in terms of you being in that position of getting disturbed every day by high truck traffic noise, making kids not sleeping well. So, just imagine how the life will be. So, I sincerely request, and please consider rerouting the traffics, truck traffic as per the law, and give peaceful life to us, our kids, and also, please save our homes from getting damaged. And thank you all for your consideration. And I, I got a few signatures from our community neighbors in the last couple days.
Okay, if you could give those, I'll give those to Mr. Spence, please.
And also, if you can please give the email address, so that I already started changing our petition online. I got a good number of signatures in the last couple days itself.
Okay, if you'd forward that on. Thank you very much. Jean King.
Good evening, Jean King, Livermore, California. For the last several months, citizens have been expressing their opinions on the downtown development. Individuals were encouraged to attend seven workshops, submit comments by the printed workbooks and priority sheets, and enter comments on the website, YourLivermore.org. I tabulated the results by location of the hotel, since that is a critical piece of the plan. The maps from the seven workshops are posted online by workshop and by table. I tabulated them by table, not by the maps, since some tables had multiple maps. The results are favorable, and talking about the hotel, 47, 49 would like it on the west side, 35 on the east side, and there were 16 with maps that had hotels on both sides. This is strong support for the west side hotel, since many participants believed that the information presented at the workshops was slanted towards the east side hotel. Now, the online input is available for viewing, and one option was, build your own concept by creating a map. This was quite complicated and detailed to ask, and it did not always work easily, and sometimes it did not work at all for some people. So, individuals drew maps and/or wrote the description of their designs. The results, using both drawings and comments, were 72 for the west side hotel and 31 for the east side hotel, more than 2 to 1 for the west side hotel. Another input option was comments on the four concepts, which were the sample site plans. The results were 121 for the west side, 27 for the east side, and 22 with no mention of a hotel or expressly wanting no hotel. This was higher than 4 to 1 ratio for the west side over the east side site for the hotel. The third option online was general comments. The results were 29 for the west side hotel, 4 for the east side, and 34 with no mention of hotel or expressly wanting no hotel. This was a 7 to 1 ratio for the west side hotel over the east side. The fourth input was ranking the most important features of the new downtown development or priorities. The clear winner was community character and design, followed by open space and parking with very close numbers, and in last place was housing. These rankings were pretty consistent throughout the input period. These are the online figures, and do not take into account any of the input, other than the maps that was turned in with hard copies at workshops or other events. This data shows a clear preference for the west side hotel, and a high priority is community character, open space, and parking, with housing on the bottom. Can a west side hotel go forward as fast or faster than the east side hotel and not exceed the dollars the city was allocated for the first phase of downtown development? If so, then a west side hotel could meet the goals of the vast majority of citizens and address the serious concerns of east side supporters. And I do want to make some comment answering someone who said that in any of the proposals there was no handicap proposed close to the bankhead, and in the west side, A, yes, there was parking for handicapped next to the bankhead and a large garage, which would also accommodate many regular parkers. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. King. Okay, that's it for the Citizens Forum. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. These are typically routine items that are usually passed on a single motion. However, we do have a number of cards on the 4.12. However, we do have a number of cards on the 4.12. Okay, so let's do this. Let us, if I could have a motion for 4.01 through 4.11, I will pass that, and then we'll handle 4.12 separately. So do you have a motion for 4.01 to 4.11?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Coumber.
Second.
Said by Councilmember Carling. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? That passed unanimously. Okay, moving on to 4.12. This is the resolution authorizing the extension of the ENRA agreement with the Presidio Companies. Mr. Stewart, staff comments on this?
No real comments. We're just, Presidio did request a six-month extension. The current agreement would expire on November 28th. Staff's recommending a three-month extension that would end on February 28th, with the thought being that that would be adequate time to receive council direction and regarding the downtown public engagement process and the downtown priority.
Okay, any questions at this point for staff? Okay, no questions? All right, moving on to the public comments. Denise Ludden, Jean King, Sally Dunlop.
Good evening, Denise Ludden. I do not want you to extend the contract for three months for Presidio if they cannot do a West Side Hotel. There are many of us who keep speaking of a really vibrant, beautiful hotel, and I just don't see how that can happen on the east side. I second Bill Dunlop's and Jeff Caskey's comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean King, Sally Dunlop, Joan Green.
I'm back, Jean King, Livermore. I agree. I ask you not to renew the ENRA for Presidio Hotels. I think you need to open it up to other developers to see if there's some others that will come in with some new proposals for what they would like to do. Presidio can also apply, and you can still be talking to them, but I think having just an exclusive arrangement with Presidio is not going to bring the best possibilities that we might actually get. Presidio stated at the, when they last asked for the extension back spring, that they were equally open to both sides, but I have not seen where they have shown any interest or any plans or any interest, really, in the West Side Hotel, which I think is very valuable. So I ask you to open it up to more developers. Thank you.
Thank you. Sally Dunlop, Joan Green, Jeff Caskey.
So my comments are not going to be as eloquent as previous speakers, because I'm very disappointed with the progress, the process concerning the eight acres downtown. The council seemed to me to be very strongly implied that our input and our opinions would be considered and how the eight acres would be developed. And I'm not the only person that believes this. We had a steering committee who put in many hours, and many committee meetings were held. We listened to Mr. David Early for well over an hour, and in one meeting, it was hour and 25 minutes. I timed it. When, then there were people who were exhausted, and many citizens had to leave and put their children to bed or them to bed so that they could get up and go to work the next day. Then after all of that information, we were handed fruity markers and paper to draw what we considered to be a good plan. We even had a choice to provide an online opportunity to build our own development, which some, sometimes worked and sometimes didn't. The hotel location was the biggest issue. And as we've heard, the citizens favored the hotel on the west side from at least 2 to 1 in favor over the hotel being on the east side. I'm in amazement of why this city asked for our opinions and input when it was only to kind of make us seem like we were being considered, when I don't think we were. I know kind of why, because we voted out two council persons and voted in two councilmen. I think that maybe this time you thought that we should have some input and let the citizens have an opinion. However, I don't think it was really considered. And so here we are, and here you are, to approve Presidio an extension. And I'm, I'm very, very disappointed that that's just starting all over again and, and trying to put park, handicap parking behind the bankhead when we were going to try to make that some kind of education, educational facility, which besides food and water and shelter is really the best thing that we can do for anyone. And I will be so disappointed if you vote for Presidio after all of this input from the citizens of Livermore, who went through that process of giving input that will be completely dismissed. And I wish all of you would grow beards.
Joan Green, Jeff Caskey, and Doug Mann.
Yes, Joe Green, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just am speaking off the cuff. I saw this item in the agenda, and I'm concerned that you're considering extending the agreement with Presidio Companies. I attended all of the steering committee meetings and all of the other meetings that I was allowed to have a voice in. And I clearly remember hearing the gentleman representing Presidio stating that there was, that he could handle a hotel on either side, and then later coming back to say that he could not do the same. If it was not on the east side, he would have to do a lesser hotel. Jean King did not mention that. And I feel it was almost a threat that we were going to have to abide by the east side. And I'm just very dissatisfied with him. I think it's, it's fair for him to be included in the final statements, proposals, but I think we need other proposals also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Jeff Caskey, Doug Mann, Tamara Royce.
Good evening again, Jeff Caskey. You're being asked to again extend exclusive negotiating rights to developer Presidio. But before you do, you should answer a few important questions. Since rejecting the Lennar Presidio Plan last year, have you done outreach to find other developers? Are there any conversations with other prospective developers that would be restricted based on having the ENRA you're going to approve? And if so, is that consistent with looking for a good developer? Even if you're not going to reach out for other developers, and given what we've learned in the outreach process, you do need a commitment from Presidio to pursue with equal effort a hotel on either side of Livermore Avenue while preserving Blacksmith Square. You know I'm an advocate for the West Side Hotel. I'm simply asking that we have equal effort from the chosen developer. Otherwise, locking down a developer who has shown only an East Side Hotel plan and has advocated against the West Side Hotel plans that the public says it prefers is a poor statement of the council's interest in the public process. I realize that many factors will go into the final decision on all aspects of the development, from open space to hotel location. But closing out half of those options by choosing a developer with a one-sided agenda looks like the council is deaf to the public input. The reason we're not already building on the site today is that a previous council started this process by first asking developers what they wanted, not asking the people and the businesses of Livermore. You wanted to snatch victory from defeat, and wisely you flipped the process on its head and did a thorough job of engaging the public in the downtown plan. I recommend against backsliding and letting an out-of-town developer tell us what's best for us. The hotel will proceed only with millions of dollars of subsidy money from us, the people of Livermore. Let's make sure the people do not lose their voice in the process. Thank you.
Doug Mann, Tamara Royce, Elizabeth Judge.
Good evening, Council, Doug Mann. I think you should keep that look all the way through Christmas, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, all the way. It's going to work.
It's not going to get that long that fast.
It's going to work. I, I found myself, as I was thinking about this issue today, thinking about Alabama. And the reason why I think I kept sort of thinking about Alabama is that they have a much nastier and bigger issue that, to all the normal-thinking people, should have been resolved maybe after the first or second time he was kicked off the judiciary, that this is not the kind of person that you'd want to elect to be a senator. And as I get back to our issue, I think about that subject. The, the subject of Presidio should have been resolved a while ago, not coming back and back. I mean, we gave them the first extension. I was a little disappointed on that. After the second one, we should have known. I appreciate hearing Mr. Stewart tell us they asked for six month, and months, and maybe he feels he's being fair by saying, well, how about three? But, and that's not adequate. Presidio, we can't exclude any other hotelier at this point that might come into the process by simply supporting the company that really just doesn't have the support of the people and, and of the process. And I've thought about, you know, they were the only ones that responded to our RFP. And I think about, you know, why, why I don't respond to RFPs. We get RFPs in, in my business. You know, as a business owner, we have to budget our time. And at times when we're busy, for example, if we get something that looks like a lot of work to put together, we might not take the time. And I'm not sure the nuances of why each of the other 15, not, sorry, that was the other, the other.
It was 14.
Why the other people who were presented the RFPs either didn't respond or didn't respond adequately. But staff has to refocus on bringing in new hoteliers. Presidio is not a, is not a good fit. It, it just hasn't worked. And I urge you to, and, and the other thing is, you know, putting this on consent calendar, this was the wrong way to do it. I'm, I fear for the message that staff or staff council is sending us in, in putting this very important issue on the consent calendar. It's not a good look, unlike your beard, which is a good look. See you later.
Thank you. Tamara Royce, Elizabeth Judge, Tom Jefferson.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, I want, I came in tonight to talk about this because I've been concerned about Presidio all along. And, you know, I really felt from early in the process that they don't have the best interests of Livermore at heart. And many of the comments tonight have reflected my concerns, the fact that they had initially brought up an East Side Hotel, and then they went back and said at one point, when things looked a little dicey and we were sort of restarting the process, that, oh yeah, we can do something on the west side. And then all of a sudden, when, you know, things were sort of a little more coalesced as far as where things were going down, they were like, no, we really can't do that. Well, I don't want somebody who's going to play games like that, you know, trying to put together this very important project for Livermore. And I think we have seen, you know, so many times, so much that, that people are really wanting the consideration for a West Side Hotel, and that there are a lot of possibilities that, you know, should be explored as to that. Presidio mostly was talking about, you know, all along, well, it's efficient to put the hotel on the east side because it's cheaper. And that's really what I think their, you know, bottom line motivation is for working in Livermore and, and trying to get this done, is they want to build a hotel cheaply. We want to build a, you know, reasonable hotel, but one that really makes this project work. I think there's time to allow other developers to weigh in on this. I think that we could issue a new RFP. I think we kind of have a better idea now of what we want than we did when this whole thing started. So, you know, the very fact that they would request six months additional just to me is, is just indicative of their mindset, that they're really trying to put this, you know, play this a certain way. It's not fair to the citizens of Livermore. I think the council knows that we can do better. I think the council wants to make this a good project. I think there's a way forward. I'm hearing lots tonight from people that, you know, is encouraging. But we need to make this happen now and to not extend their, their negotiating agreement. Thank you.
Elizabeth Judge, Tom Jefferson, Don Ergula.
Good evening, everybody. And if I don't see you next week, happy Thanksgiving. I think we have a lot to be thankful for in this city.
We do.
I'm here to encourage you briefly to think twice or three times before extending the exclusive contract to Presidio. Now, I don't have anything against Presidio. I just think competition is a good thing. I remember hearing the rep say on May 25th, that if all you want for downtown is a successful hotel, you could put it on the east side. The implication being if you want something more for downtown, you might want to put it elsewhere. But he also mentioned putting it on railroad because the road has a curve to it. But soon after that, we didn't hear anything more from Presidio except east side. And, I mean, he's only doing what Presidio needs, as far as I could see. So I don't blame him for doing that. I do think the competition is a good thing. When I do a project at my place, I always get three bids, and I think we need to look out for the bids and find them and search for them. I wonder what the city gets out of such an exclusivity, such a contract. I mean, if we're not getting something in return directly, then we need to think about that. Once the plan for downtown is finalized by council, I think Presidio and any other hotelier could be asked to respond to the bid. Competition is a good thing, so I encourage you to think about that. And happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Judge. Tom Jefferson, Don Ergula, Evan Branding.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Jefferson. Believe it or not, I agree with everything the other speakers have said, every single word. I could see no benefit to the city of Livermore to extend this exclusive negotiating rights agreement. Now, how did this come about? How did Presidio get into this? Keep this in mind. This was last year when Lennar came up with a proposal and did not have hotel in it. They just wanted to pack houses on the west side. And then Presidio came along and said, oh, here's the east side, there's no other place to put the hotel because the houses are packed on the other side. So, east side hotel. We'll put some thought into this, maybe come up with a little plan and think about that and so on, and, you know, spend some effort on it. And so, really, they have no reason to think about the West Side Hotel, because they've already done some thinking about the, the East Side Hotel. And somebody said it's going to be cheaper. Well, I'm not sure it's going to be cheaper with underground parking, 100 spaces at $55,000 each. That's five, five and a half million dollars. That's what their current, the current proposal is for the east side, for their east side. And as you heard, the public is overwhelmingly against the East Side Hotel and in favor of the West Side Hotel. And you heard the figures from Ms. King. And so, vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Don Ergula, Evan Branding.
Good evening. Don Ergula, CEO of the Livermore Valley Chamber of Commerce and resident of Livermore since 1985. I'm here to, tonight, to reaffirm the chamber's support for this most recent extension requested by Presidio Companies for the exclusive negotiation rights agreement for a downtown hotel, and to urge your support of the staff recommendation. I believe that Presidio couldn't proceed until this planning process is completed. Correct me if I'm wrong. Since January 2017, the chamber has been on record in support of this arrangement between the city of Livermore and Presidio Companies. Presidio Presidio Companies is an experienced hotel developer of luxury properties. Having toured one of its latest projects, Los Alcochubis and St. Helena, there is little doubt that a product of this caliber would be an excellent and complementary match to the prestigious Livermore Valley wine region and to the increasingly dynamic Livermore Downtown District. Such a hotel would elevate the Livermore Valley's standing as a destination for overnight visitors. It should also be noted that as the city undergoes its current process for the development of the next phase of the downtown revitalization, Presidio Companies is the only private developer that has been identified and that has made a commitment to deliver any part of the city's vision for the downtown. No other private developer is on board for housing, commercial space, art galleries, museums, or parks, not a one. Presidio's commitment to this project should be acknowledged. I also want to recognize Presidio's efforts in talking to downtown merchants, winery owners, and others in the Livermore hospitality industry to understand their concerns and expectations for a downtown boutique hotel and Ford's participation in the downtown planning effort. Presidio is doing its due diligence. They are a quality hotel developer that deserves support as the city moves forward on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Argula. Evan Branding.
Hello, good evening, Mayor, City Council. I did not actually intend to speak on this issue initially. However, hearing all of the comments that came at the beginning of the evening as well as on this, I felt I had to speak out. I would like to echo what Dawn just has spoken about, that indeed Presidio has shown to be very well involved with the community, has really done an excellent job of outreach. I understand that there are probably reasons to have this extension that I'm not fully aware of currently. I would ask a couple of things. First, I would like to ask that if, after, when you were allowed to discuss this, if you could make clear some of the rationale behind the three-month extension. In my experience with other projects of this type, it seems to me that granting the three-month extension might actually allow construction to happen faster rather than going back to a full bid process, which would definitely benefit the downtown plan as well as moving forward on the remainder of the downtown construction. Other than that, I'd like to make sure that the council is aware, as the youngest person to speak on this, that there is often a disproportionate number of voices on one side of this that come before you. There are many, many people I speak with on a daily basis that I interact with that are not necessarily happy with the direction that things are going either, but they're not happy for different reasons. We feel, much of the younger community in Livermore feels that our voices are silenced and that we do not get to be heard. We have families, we have jobs, we have a lack of time to come to the city council meetings, and unfortunately, because of that, you do not necessarily see us as often. But there are many people who would like to see development move forward quickly and efficiently, who are more concerned about making sure that there are places to live for their friends and their family than they are about whether a hotel goes up on the East Side or West Side. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Branding. That's the last comment card that I have. Question for staff. So, the RFPs, I believe we had 14 responses to our RFP.
That's correct.
Okay, 14. And so, the last one standing at this point, because there were a couple of other hoteliers that submitted proposals, the last one standing at this point is Presidio, and this is why they're coming before us for an extension of the ENRA. Has staff been approached by any other hoteliers proposing a project on this site?
No, we have not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, bringing that back to the council. Councilmember Warner?
I'll start with a few comments, and then as the discussion goes, I'll probably want to say something else. First thing I want to say is sort of echo what Vice Mayor Spodowski said in the last meeting. You know, this absolutism is maybe premature at best, because the way I see this, we, it's way too early to decide where the hotel goes. And we haven't got a thorough analysis of any real plan yet. So to make a decision before that analysis comes in doesn't strike me as the, it's not the way I do things as a scientist, so I don't know where the, how one can do that. The other comment I would make is that we've changed the process and that we've gone through the outreach and everything else. And then the next meeting or so will maybe decide what our goals are, and then we'll come back with plans that, and we'll see how well they do, meet those goals, we'll do the financial analysis. And we're a long ways away. And as a result, I think it's appropriate to seriously consider extending the agreement because, as was just said, they're the only hotelier that has approached us. We did have a plan in the beginning as to when we were gonna do the negotiation. We frankly have not done any negotiation because we haven't made a decision as a community as to where the hotel goes and what the deal would be. So, I think, given the fact that they have been forbearing for a long period of time, a three-month extension versus the six is appropriate because it's in about that timeframe, we will hopefully, as a community, made a decision as to where the hotel would go and how we're gonna go about it, and we could then enter into negotiations. And so that's where I'm coming from. And the other thing that, I'll just say that, we ought to be clear, I mean, there's, I've heard several speakers tonight, and it's getting into revisionist history as to how we got here. And so I would, I would just make a request that we actually be accurate as to how we got to where we are.
Yeah, I may have additional comments, but I did want to ask Mr. Patel a question, if he's willing to come up to the podium. And this is a question that I asked, I don't know, I think, six months ago when we extended the ENRA. Should we choose an East Side or West Side Hotel? Are you still interested in submitting a development and a proposal based on the criteria that we have for the hotel?
Yes.
Okay. So, thank you. That was it.
That was easy, thanks.
So, East Side or West Side? He's interested in developing a hotel. That's pretty much all I have at this point. You know, as Councilmember Warner stated, we haven't even begun to negotiate because we haven't finished the process. People are, tonight, announcing statistics and drawing conclusions. I've stayed completely out of it. I haven't gone to YourLivermore.org. I haven't read any of the comments. I'm waiting for them all to be processed. I'm waiting for this process to be completed and then presented to the council when we can all talk about it and we can all receive the information at the same time. It seems like there's conclusions being jumped to, and, you know, we have this exclusive negotiating agreement. We've never negotiated. And it's not, tonight isn't approval of Presidio to develop a hotel on either side, it's just extending our option to negotiate them, with them. And at this point, I'd like to say when we make a decision, but I'm becoming increasingly discouraged with what's happening. So, maybe I was very optimistic in advocating for launching for this, this public outreach, but, you know, I think we stand a good chance of arguing this process into infeasibility for several reasons. Whether it's the cost of materials or the economy starting to dip, whatever you want to point to, we could argue this into the ground where we, where we just end up with nothing. So, like, I've said this before, I think a hotel can be successful on either side, that if you put a hotel on one side or the other, it's not the end of the world, it's not gonna destroy the town. It's a choice between two good options. And we're just not there yet. So that's why I would be in favor of extending the agreement until we have a there there, if that makes any sense.
Councilmember Carling?
First, I want to thank all the speakers. There's obviously a lot of passion around this. However, I am, I agree with my colleagues to the right. I, the process is not finished yet. Some people seem to think that, and they even express that point of view, that they were disappointed in the process. Well, we're not finished. And I, like Vice Mayor, I didn't go to any of the outreach meetings. Obviously, I chaired the steering committee, but I didn't go to any outreach meetings. I have not been on the website. I am waiting for the information to come from staff as to the results that they've collected. And from that point on, we'll begin to negotiate and discuss and deliberate amongst ourselves as to what the options are. So I'm, I'm a little chagrined that people think we're at the end of the process and we've come to some decision. We haven't. We still have plenty of work to do. And much of that will begin two weeks from tonight. I would also, I mean, there was another comment made that competition is important. Well, we did have some competition, and we had precious few responses for hotel, and I think it is accurate to say that Lennar reached out to Presidio. And, yeah, you're right, Lennar put it on the East Side, but that's because, you're right, they loaded it up with housing on the other side, which the community was against. And now we're discussing where the hotel should go. And as far as I'm concerned, my discussions, and I've had a few over the last year with Mr. Patel, he's quite agreeable to putting on the East Side once we decide what the character of that hotel's going to be. And I'm very confident that it'll be a high-quality place. He's done that before in other places like Napa. And I have every confidence that he would do a fantastic job. So I think we've had some competition, and obviously, for whatever reason, other hoteliers weren't interested in bidding in the process that we had some 18 months ago. So I support the extension. I don't think it's unreasonable to give Mr. Patel, he's been more than patient, I believe, and he and his company have been more than patient with us as a community. And I think he deserves the opportunity to, for the three-month extension.
Councilmember Coomer?
I, I would echo almost everybody, in, to a degree. When I first met with Mr. Patel many months ago, long before we had an extension, I certainly brought up the idea of a West Side Hotel. How is that gonna get looked at? We would, we were, I was assured that we would be looking at some, at options on both sides. I haven't seen anything, and I've had, you know, I've not been in touch with them lately. So I'm not sure exactly how I feel about that, quite honestly. I also want to speak to the amount of, almost depression that I heard from public comment. We, it won't be till next meeting till we see any results from the outreach. We won't see anything until then. We haven't seen anything yet. We haven't decided anything. I, with all my colleagues about that, that, no decision is being made east or west right now as to extend this exclusive negotiating rights agreement for another, I'm gonna take it as 90 days. And I'm not willing to go outside of 90 days. I just, I think that's enough. I want to hear something. I want to know something that, you know, what are we looking at? Where are we looking at it? Are we looking at both sides? What can we do to make sure that we've explored everything? Because I'm really, really upset that I haven't seen anything from the West Side yet. And that may be a very simple answer. Really, nobody's interested. That's one answer right there that could, could actually be an occurrence. But I'd like to know that, I'd get a full report on how that's working out. But there are hints that there is interest out there, perhaps not responding to the RFPs over a year ago. But, yeah, it's a tough one for me. I'm, I came here wanting to hear that we had, you know, that extending this was gonna go somewhere besides an East Side Hotel, because I could go either way, quite honestly, if it comes down to that. Neither one is the end of the world. I'd prefer one on the West Side. But, you know, it's, it's just that, I guess I'm a little dismayed at the tone of the public comment that this is the end of the world. Well, no, we haven't even seen the world yet. We're Columbus coming across the Atlantic right now. We haven't come to the New World, and that's gonna be starting with our next meeting. But it's not gonna happen here. This is merely to extend the exclusive negotiating rights. I think the staff report was for six months, but I'm happy to go with three, I think, at this point, and I would go along with that.
So, could I say one other thing? I probably want to come back. The other thing, and listening to the other comments here, and people saying, well, we haven't seen something from the West Side. I think there's something to kind of, just kind of be practical. There aren't too many places to put a hotel on the East Side, right? So you don't have to worry about it. The West Side, however, is complex, and there are many options. So, the Presidio has said they're willing to consider the West Side as well. The fact that they haven't spent a lot of money devising plans for a multitude of options makes sense. So I, realistically, we need to make a decision. Not only is this an east or west side, it's, if it goes on the West Side, where on the West Side and why? And until that happens, and Wes, colleagues have alluded to, which that kind of conversation will happen in the next couple of months, then it would behoove Presidio to come in with real plans. But asking them to put together all conceivable options on the West Side is an indication that they're serious about it is unrealistic and unreasonable. So, I just want to point that out.
I was particularly struck by Mr. Yonker's comments during the Citizens Forum, when he talked about the divisiveness and the polarization that we have seen in this process. And I think that that's just continued by, by the fear-mongering that I'm hearing, that the hotel has to go on the East Side, or this, this council is going to fill the West Side with housing. We heard that tonight. We heard that comment tonight. This whole council has heard loud and clear that the housing is at the very bottom of the list. We heard that loud and clear. So what purpose does it serve to say that the hotel, if it goes on the East Side, then the whole West Side is going to be filled with housing? Because we all know that's not true. So why do we need to have fear-mongering before we complete the process and are allowed to make a decision based on community input and what makes the most sense for this community? People say, well, we care about this city. You don't think we do? We put 40 hours a week, plus. We make less than minimum wage at this because we love this community. And to come up and say, well, we care about this community, well, so do we. We love this community, that's why we're up here. And we want this community to be the best that it possibly can. So, fear-mongering doesn't serve anybody's purpose. We want the best possible project for Livermore. Absolutely, I think everybody here would agree with that. So, let's, let's finish the process. Let's get through this, let's get to the other side. We've got Presidio that has stepped up, they're willing to work with the city, they're willing to negotiate. We didn't set what side. They're willing to negotiate. That's what a negotiating agreement's about. So, we're gonna continue this process that we've started, and, and we're gonna, we're gonna finish it, and we're gonna continue to have more public input and more comment and more analysis. So with that, is there a motion from the council?
I'll move we extend the ENR with Presidio for three months.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Carling.
Oh, I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Warner. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? It passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments tonight. Thank you for taking your time and coming. Appreciate that. Moving on to, this must be 5.01. This is the hearing to consider the pre-zoning of the Concanon Winery property to the South Livermore Valley Agricultural Zoning District. Andy Ross and Steve Stewart coming up to the plate.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Marchand, members of City Council. Tonight's item is the pre-zoning of Concanon Winery as part of the annexation of the winery campus. This is a follow-up to the October 9th council meeting, when council directed staff to amend the existing conservation easement on the property to further limit development. As a bit of background, here's the Concanon Winery campus. It's located within South Livermore Valley, and it's adjacent to the city boundaries, which are shown here in pink or purple, as well as the South Livermore Valley urban growth boundary shown as the dotted line. growth boundary shown as the dotted line. It's located at the end of South Livermore Avenue and on the north side of Tesla Road. The winery campus is made up of three interconnected parcels. It contains administrative offices, a caretaker's unit, bottling facilities, a tasting room, and other improvements that collectively function with each other as a winery and visitor destination. On October 9th, council found that annexation and provision of sewer service is consistent with general plan goals and policies to promote South Livermore Valley as a premier wine region and to proactively protect and enhance viticulture and cultivated agriculture. They also authorized staff to prepare an application for LAFCO, or the Local Agency Formation Commission. Prior to annexing, the property first must be pre-zoned, so that a zoning district is in place upon annexation. An application to LAFCO would not be considered complete until the property has such a zoning designation. And staff proposes pre-zoning the subject property, the South Livermore Valley Agricultural Zoning District, so that we may proceed with the annexation application. As we discussed previously, the entire winery property is encumbered by a conservation easement. The areas in green are the areas that limit the use of that land to cultivated agricultural open space. The red area is what's known as the building envelope, where any commercial or residential development could occur. The red line, the red boundary, is the annexation boundary generally. And as you'll notice, there's one parcel that's currently not encumbered by a conservation easement. As a condition of the annexation, the existing conservation easement would be amended and reinstated to include this parcel, and so the new building envelope would look something like this. Here's a zoomed-in version of the winery campus and the red line indicating generally where the building envelope would be. At the October 9th meeting, there were concerns about the scale of allowable development under the South Livermore Valley Ag Zone. And council introduced the ordinance establishing this zone with conditions to amend the existing conservation easement, which would include limiting building coverage to 130,000 square feet and prohibiting hotels and event centers. Based on that direction, staff met with Concanon's winery staff, representatives from the Friends of Livermore, Friends of the Vineyards, and the Sierra Club, as well as the easement holder, the Tri-Valley Conservancy. And ultimately, agreement to these terms was unachievable, and the Tri-Valley Conservancy stated that these limitations conflicted with their model conservation easement and the way they administer their conservation easements. Because the annexation would allow connection to the sewer and relieve a groundwater quality issue, and pre-zoning is necessary to allow the application before to LAFCO, staff's recommending the city council introduce an ordinance pre-zoning the property to the South Livermore Valley Ag Zone. Also, given the special circumstances of this annexation, if council finds it necessary to include additional restrictions on the property, then staff recommends council direct us to proceed with establishing a planned development zoning district that would limit development intensity, establish development standards appropriate to the site, and identify allowable wine country uses. Since the publication of your staff report, staff have met with the Wine Group, Friends of Livermore, Friends of the Vineyards, and the Sierra Club, and outlined acceptable set of points that would be incorporated into such a planned development. These points include allowing up to an additional 6,500 square feet of coverage or floor area, limiting building and structure heights to 30 feet maximum, proactively protecting the site's historical resources, allow wine country visitor services and activities that are currently occurring on the site to continue, and allow for a wine country inn with a maximum of 14 rooms. Generally, all the parties agree to these concepts and the framework of this approach. And if so directed, staff would return to council with a new ordinance and a planned development. And if that planned development were approved by council, we would substitute that into the LAFCO application and replace the South Livermore Valley Ag pre-zoning. Mr. Sutton from the Wine Group is here with us this evening, and he has a brief statement. And then he and staff are available for any questions. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Any questions for staff at this point? Okay, very good. Mr. Sutton?
Good evening, thank you. My name is John Sutton. I'm the chief financial officer of the Wine Group. I'm also a part-owner of the Wine Group and the individual who's ultimately responsible for the Concanon operation. I just want to stress tonight the importance of this annexation on our business. And we've been running continuously since 1883, and without this annexation, our business will be in jeopardy. We have no other options. There is no Plan B at this point in time. So we ask that you approve this, and time is really of the essence. This has been probably a two-year ordeal for us. We've spent over $3 million to date. We continue to spend about $15,000 a month, and will continue to do that until the annexation is complete. We support the planned development and the conditions that are brought before you tonight. We think they're fair, and they're reasonable, and they take into consideration all of our concerns and the concerns of the other stakeholders that have expressed concern with this in previous meetings. So we ask that you please approve this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing. We have cards from Dick Schneider, Micah Dale Brock, Gene King. Mr. Schneider. How many years have we been tilting windmills together?
A lot of years.
Fewer windmills to tilt that. Thank you, Mayor Marchand, members of the council. We support the proposed planned development zoning district as a way to move forward. We agree with what John Sutton has said, that all of these provisions have been carefully considered over the last month. We've worked with staff, even on vacation days, holidays, worked with different council members on weekends, at night, phone calls. And we're really pleased that we were able to reach consensus. I really want to thank Councilmember Warner. He took the bull by the horns middle of last week and just worked this every day until we could reach a consensus and an agreement. So I do hope that you move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Micah Dale Brock, Gene King, Tamara Royce.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and council. I'm kind of late in the game. As I've stated with Andy, we didn't get notice, and that's been rectified for our location. We live at the end of Almond, and for some reason, the notice didn't get sent more than 250 feet out in the vineyard, which we're well outside of that. But I've got a couple of questions. I'm not saying I'm totally against it. It's just I am worried about, as you've already mentioned, that it shouldn't be developed. It should maintain as it is. We've lived there for over 20 years. We'd kind of like to see it stay that way. I have questions of the Wine Group. We had conditions of approval through the county for noise and different, is that going to be maintained?
Yes.
Honored and shared with them?
Same, same conditional use.
Okay, all right. Just as long as everybody knows some of that. I have to give them kudos. They've been very good at dust control. You guys have done great efforts in noise. I still get concerned with the noise late at night. Yeah, but I mean, it's like summertime, our windows are down, and I've gone over there. When you're standing at the vineyard, it's like me and you talking here, but our direction, it's like a megaphone. I can make recordings with my phone in the window, and it's just like, I'm talking this loud to you, and the noise, it's odd. I don't know why. But the country inn, I thought we said we weren't going to have hotels. Isn't that considered a hotel? There's a, that's news to me.
What you could do is just go through your questions, and then we can have staff respond.
I'm not saying no. I just didn't realize that was on the plan. That's pretty much it for me. You know, like I said, they've been good to work with. I need something, you know, some issue, I call them, and they're really good. And it sounds like everything's going to be maintained. But I am very nervous, because things do change. Council members, mayors, everybody changes. And I'm kind of worried that my little pavement over there will change, and I want to try to maintain what they have and what I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brock. Just a quick question. I know that there were, I'm sorry, just for staff here. There was some proposal to convert the old Nielsen House into an inn probably 15 years ago. So you just speak to that comment, but it sounds like everything's going to stay the same as far as impacts.
Sure. The Wine Group has stated they don't have an intention to construct a inn or a bed and breakfast, but did want to reserve that right, just like most of the other wineries have, at least with a conditional use permit or some kind of discretionary review. The old Nielsen House was, I understand, proposed to be turned into a B and B at one point, but ran into the same issue that Concanon's facing now with the septic loading and constraints by the state and county through the Clean Water Act.
But those would be alleviated by a sewer connection?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Gene King, Tamara Royce, Rebecca Brock.
Hi, good evening. I'm just here to represent Lee Yonker, who is out of town, out of the country, and because as chairman of the Friends of Livermore. And Friends of Livermore has been in consultation with the Sierra Club and the Friends of the Vineyards. And we agree with this proposal. We think that it will, we do want the water quality to be improved in South Livermore. We believe that this will help it. And we think that it is a win-win for all the community organizations. We just do want to restrict, the thing was, that was worked on was the 6,500 square feet, which was the sum of either the footprint or the total footage. So it looks like it's in there. And so thank you all, everybody who's worked on this for almost a year. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. King. Tamara Royce, Rebecca Brock, Donna Gula.
Hi, I'm here for Friends of the Vineyards tonight, and I do want to thank the council very much for, you know, supporting hopefully this project as it's been redefined. I want to thank the Wine Group for being a really good community partner. This is really what I, you know, love to see, so much concern for how we can get this done in a way that works for everybody. I wanted to thank Councilman Warner for his efforts to kind of get the two sides together and get staff working with us to really facilitate how we could make this happen in a way that I think, you know, protects the water and enables Concanon to continue to operate and serve our community, and also, you know, protects the urban growth boundary and limits the growth in a way that's consistent with our urban growth boundary and our various ordinances that affect South Livermore. And, you know, Concanon's been here a long time. Friends of the Vineyards hasn't been here quite as long, but we've been around since the 80s, working to protect South Livermore and enhance the open space areas and the vineyards and the wineries, and make this a wonderful, you know, destination region for people to visit and for the people who live here. So we're just really pleased that we can, you know, serve that function in a meaningful way and really have a wonderful outcome on this occasion. So thank you, and I'm looking forward to seeing it happen.
Thank you, Ms. Royce. Rebecca Brock and Donna Gula.
Good evening, everybody. I have some comments. First of all, I would like to object the way we were not notified. We live right next to Concanon Winery, and we were not informed of the process of annexation until October 27th, when we received an email notification. Yet, we live right next door to them. They did this prior when they built their large wine production factory. We were not notified that they were going to build a factory until the end of the process again, and we objected to the building of that factory. And the reason that we're here today and they're asking for annexation is because they didn't have enough septic tank to take in consideration when they built the factory. And so now they're asking to be hooked up to the sewer, the city, because they overbuilt. Their factory is very loud. I've been woken up several times at night. I work a lot, and when I get my sleep interrupted, it really affects my work. Anyways, I object because I think that the state is coming down really hard on the cities and making all these legislative acts where the cities are having to put high-density housing on all their city properties. And I know that there is a South Livermore plan, and that was voted by the voters, but I think the state can override that. And that is my fear, that there will be a large housing development or some type of business development on their site once it gets annexed, and the city will have to approve housing because of the state. My other concern would be if the wine industry diminishes, and because of the, you know, there's new crop coming, and in several of the other states, my understanding is a lot of the wine groups have converted to the new crop. And my concern is that that would happen also. So those are my objections.
Thank you, Ms. Brock. Quick question for staff. Will it be possible for high-density housing to go on this parcel?
No, the general plan and zoning are the regulatory controlling aspects of that, but the conservation easement would preclude any sort of development other than open space or vineyards.
And the conservation easement is for agriculture. So if somebody decided to change their mind and take out one of the most historic vineyards in the country, it would have to stay in agriculture, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so it couldn't be, it couldn't go into housing?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So I have one question, too, clarifying. It was my understanding that the pressure here for the need to come in is not due to the factory, but it's more due to the tasting room restaurant activities. Is that correct?
Yes, it's due to the domestic waste.
Right, so that's the problem.
Okay, very good, thank you. Good point. Donna Gula.
Thank you, Mayor Marchand. Donna Gula, CEO of the Livermore Valley Chamber of Commerce. The chamber supports the city's effort to respond to Concanon's request for annexation for the purposes of tying into the city sewer system and urges your approval. We caution against burdening this request with additional or unreasonable layers of restrictions. It's really nice to hear that there's been some consensus achieved with many of the stakeholders, so that's good news in light of, you know, the mood of some of these meetings sometimes. Concanon and the Wine Group has had to contend with the costs and challenges of wastewater disposal to respond to increasingly stringent state septic system regulations, the cost of which would have shuttered most any other winery operator in the valley. The city of Livermore has the opportunity to support a business and an industry that provides many benefits to this community. Done properly, your support of this annexation will result in the continued and long-term prosperity of Concanon Winery and the Wine Group, sustaining the economic vitality of the Livermore Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last of the cards that I have. Just going to bring it back to the council. Councilmember Warner.
Yeah, I could say a couple of comments. It was actually, as alluded to by Dick, it was a lot of long hours, but it was actually a pleasure working with everybody and coming to an agreement, and I think it should serve as a model as to how we ought to come together on other things. So I think this is a very reasonable set of conditions. And the thing I wanted to point out is where we've arrived here on this planned development is probably where we should have started in the first place, but there was a concern about trying to do things quickly. And I think the other key here that hasn't been mentioned is that we're going to dual-track this, and so that we can take the time to do it properly with the planned development, but we can begin with the LAFCO, you know, petitions to form it and everything, and so that it really won't hold us up too much. And I do believe that if we take the, if we affirm this tonight, that allows Concanon to start making their plans, and we can get going. So I think this is a really good... So I think this is a really good resolution, and the planned development, I believe, and I think, I could ask staff, I think this is the right way to do this, opposed to all the other kind of thoughts that were put forth in the past, but I don't think there's a better way to do it. And I'd like staff to answer if that's true.
This is a very appropriate way to address all the concerns that the community has. Obviously, we reached a positive outcome here and a number of different groups coming together around a set of conditions, and planned development is really the best mechanism of making sure that those conditions are incorporated into the project.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to commend everybody who worked on this. It seems like various groups got together very quickly. I still am behind in responding to messages about it, so my apologies. I see at least two, three people here tonight where I'm behind on responding, but I do believe that this is the proper way to do it. It provides the clarity that I think I personally lacked on the last go-around with this. So tonight, I will not be issuing a shaky eye on this one, as I did the last time. The weird abstaining even though I participated equals a weak eye. I think tonight I can give a strong eye to this one, so, thank you.
Councilmember Carley?
Yeah, I agree with what the folks have said. I appreciate all the work and the efforts that have gone into this, and I agree that we've come to a pretty reasonable conclusion or solution and hope and expect we can help Concanon out with their wastewater problems. So let's move forward.
Vice Mayor Cooper?
Well, since everybody else has said it already, but I just want to, it seemed like a well-practiced choir tonight, and I love it on this issue, that so many different groups are able to work together and come to a very strong conclusion that is going to benefit everybody. The Concanon outfit will be able to run unabated once this is all set up and going. It will certainly help them work. It will keep the groundwater cleaner. Many, many good things will happen at this, and I'm pleased to hear it. And I will say that I hope you are communicating with the Brock's, so some of their concerns will be addressed also as we move forward with everything there, too, so.
John, when I gave you that paper on BOD loading from winery waste, what was that, two years ago, three years ago? Three years ago, yes. We've been working on this for a long time, so I'm certainly happy to see that we got some resolution, because this report that I found showed that the wastewater loading, the biochemical oxygen demand, the strength of that wastewater from wineries was very, very low, negligible. So the groundwater impacts are not coming from the winery operations, but really the concern here was the state over the domestic waste. So it looks like we may have a solution to that. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move. We proceed with bringing them into the city on this dual-track process.
Councilmember Warner?
And I'll strong second that one.
Seconded by the strong eye here.
Strong eye.
Well, I think so strong, because Vice Mayor Spodowsky worked on this with me, that he's going to lead us in kumbaya at the end.
I just wanted to clarify, the council takes its action. So this would come, it's not listed here, but it would come back to your planning commission first, and then we'll come back to the city council.
So what you're approving tonight is an introduction of the ordinance to pre-zone it to SLV Ag, and then essentially with direction to essentially initiate an application to rezone the property and essentially, can you flip to the next slide there? Oops, there we go. Essentially, your planned development would be South Livermore Ag District, essentially with these restrictions placed on top of that. So that's the total package of action that was staff's recommendation, and so I guess the concurrence from the council, the motion in the second, or that you were moving staff's recommendation on this?
Yeah, that's exactly what we said, right?
I said it strongly.
I heard him say that.
Yeah.
Everybody clear on that? Okay, so we have a motion. Councilmember Warner, second by Vice Mayor Spodowsky. Any comment or discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions, it passes unanimously. Moving on to 5.02 Chestnut Square. And just to remind everybody, we're going to be doing the K for last. We're going to do the 6.02 will come before 6.01. And we have Frances Reisner and Eric Uranga, and welcome back again, Ms. Reisner. It's good to have you there.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, council is requested to approve several items that will allow MidPen Housing to develop the first phase of the Chestnut Square community. As you know, in March 2017, city council approved development entitlements for the project. Chestnut Square will be developed in three phases. A 72-unit senior affordable rental project and a 42-unit family affordable rental project will be developed by MidPen Housing. The 44-unit market rate townhome project will be developed by Wilmington Residential. As background, in 2015, the city entered into a disposition development and loan agreement referred to as DDLA with MidPen, which describes the scope, financing expectations, and timeline to execute the phases. The DDLA provided a $650,000 predevelopment loan to be divided and assumed in the future by the affordable senior and family projects. The DDLA describes that the city will contribute the land for the affordable housing projects, and it describes that in addition to the land, the city will provide $10 million in housing trust funds to support development costs for both the affordable projects. It also allowed MidPen to engage Wilmington Homes to purchase the market rate property and the proceeds from which will fund a portion of the city's development loan assistance for the affordable projects. I'm sorry. Here we can see, I skipped over the photo. Here we can see the artist's rendering of the future project once it's completed. The senior project is the first phase, and it is located nearest to the corner of Chestnut and P, right here at this corner. And MidPen has secured all of the construction and permanent financing needed in addition to the city's assistance in order to commence with the senior project. This includes nearly $21 million in low-income housing tax credit program funding, a $6,250,000 loan from Wells Fargo and Community, a California Community reinvestment corp for construction and permanent financing, $710,000 in affordable housing program funds from the Federal Home Loan Bank. And in addition to the development funding, they've received a commitment of 30 project-based Section 8 vouchers from the Livermore Housing Authority, which will help the project serve the lowest-income seniors. So in a light of Phase 1 being ready to move forward, staff now recommends that city council approve certain agreements, which have been provided to council in substantial form, subject to final approval by the city attorney, and to make other approvals necessary to initiate Phase 1. So first, staff recommends approval of an amendment to the DDLA with MidPen Housing, which will assign certain obligations under that agreement, such as the predevelopment loan, to the new limited partnerships that will own the affordable projects. And these are Chestnut Square Senior Associates LP and Chestnut Square Family Associates LP. These limited partnerships have been established for the purposes of receiving tax credit funding, and they will be controlled by MidPen. Staff also recommends that city council approve an indemnity agreement, which was required by the original DDLA. This agreement pertains to the implementation of an environmental remediation plan during construction. The plan has been developed in consultation with the Alameda County Department of Environmental Health and will address transitioning of the site safely from commercial to residential use. Staff also recommends that council approve the following pertaining to, specifically pertaining to the development of the senior parcel as Phase 1. First, to approve the transfer of the senior housing parcel to Chestnut Square Senior Associates LP and approve an affordable housing loan agreement that describes the three elements of city support for that project, which include a land acquisition loan of $4,320,000, which is the amount of the fair market appraised value of the senior parcel, a development loan in an amount not to exceed $5,400,000 from the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and the assignment of a portion of MidPen's previously disbursed predevelopment loan in the amount of $337,566. And in conjunction with the loans, staff recommends council approve a regulatory agreement that will restrict units in the project to be affordable for seniors at extremely low and very low incomes for 55 years, including five units, which will be reserved for homeless seniors and supported with services. Also, for council's approval is a subordination agreement for the city's loans in favor of Wells Fargo National Association, who, as mentioned, will provide construction and permanent financing for the project. However, the regulatory agreement ensures that affordability requirements related to the city's density bonus award are permanently maintained ahead of all financing. Staff recommends council approve the following pertaining to the development of Phase 2, which is the Chestnut Family Project. First, approve the transfer of the family housing parcel to Chestnut Square Family Associates LP. Transfer of the family parcel will facilitate the installation of shared infrastructure and roadways during the construction of the senior project. Staff also recommends approval of an affordable housing loan agreement that includes the following elements of city support. It includes a land acquisition loan, again, in the fair market value of that parcel, which is $2,730,000, and the assignment of a portion of MidPen's predevelopment loan in the amount of $312,434. No development loan is being requested from the city at this time. The project will apply for financing in 2018, and when it secures that financing, they will return with a request for the development portion of the funding. And then this project also received a commitment of 10 project-based Section 8 vouchers from the Livermore Housing Authority, again, to support the lowest-income units. So once again, in conjunction with the loan agreement, staff recommends council approve a regulatory agreement. It will also restrict units in the project to very low and low-income residents for 55 years, and this project will include 10 units reserved for homeless families. So there are some further recommendations for council's consideration. Staff recommends council approve the following. An appropriation of up to $5,400,000 in city housing trust funds for the Chestnut Square Senior Development Loan. Approval for the city manager to update the amended DDLA and loan documents in the amount of up to the not-to-exceed development loan amount at close of escrow. Approval for the city manager to execute all documents necessary to transfer the family and senior parcels to the respective LPs. And approval of the city manager to execute all related documents necessary to enter into the approved agreements. So if approved by city council, the properties will transfer, and financing for the senior project will close escrow on or around November 20th. MidPen has plans to secure the necessary building permits for the senior project by December 1st and to commence with construction by December 4th in accordance with the tax credit program deadlines. And we can look forward to, they've talked about a groundbreaking ceremony, which will happen in, probably targeted for late January, when you'll be able to get out there with shovels and break ground. And then MidPen will pursue all other development financing needed for the family phase during 2018. So this concludes staff's presentation. I can answer any questions you have, may have at this time. And representatives from MidPen, Mr. Carlos Castellanos and Polo Munoz are here to, if you have questions for them as well. So, thank you.
Hopefully, the concrete pad will be done by the time we do the groundbreaking.
Yes, it will, yeah.
Who will be providing the wraparound services for the homeless units?
They are, they have not officially contracted with an agency yet, but they are speaking with agencies that they have worked with on other projects that provide homeless supportive services, and we are, the city staff are in communication with them on selecting an appropriate agency and connecting with the referral agencies we have in our community as well.
Okay, because that really is key, the wraparound services to ensure success. Very good, thank you. Questions, Councilmember Warner?
Yeah, I have a question. You know, I'm reading all the articles in the paper about the proposed tax law changes and everything having an impact on the ability to build affordable housing. Do we have any risk associated with that, or is this kind of locked in, or what's the situation?
MidPen may be able to answer that in more detail, but at this stage, they have negotiated an amount with the investors, with equity investors, and I don't think it will have an immediate effect on this phase, or maybe the family phase. It may, depending on the outcome of the tax reform that's before Congress.
Thank you. Carlos Castellanos, Director Housing Development at MidPen. Just to add to what Eric said, in this particular deal, we have the investor, we have the equity investor and the lender all set up, so this one has passed that potential, and they already took into account prior to what the reform is coming up with. So we intend to close at the beginning of December, and we would not be affected by that. And yes, we are definitely going to continue monitoring this, because we want to come right back on the heels of this for the family side, and we will definitely be looking for low-income housing tax credits. Hopefully, will not affect the 9%, the competitive low-income housing tax credits that we would be going after next year.
So I guess, you know, I just want to make sure what I heard, so that some of this is kind of already set up, but there are a couple of phases here, and I want to get staff's opinion. Given even the uncertainty with respect to the tax law, does it still make sense to proceed?
Absolutely. Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. I have one card, county cops.
Mayor, staff, and council members. I think that the item before you right now came in on the 9th, over, you know, the day before Veterans Day weekend. There's a lot in this document, a lot that leads you to other parts of, you know, where you have to do a lot of deep thinking to really truly understand this. And as a scientist myself, you know, the time that I gave this, you know, it's just not, there's just too many things that are vague in here and too many things that are really extremely loaded. For instance, on page 304, there is, I don't know, have you read, have you seen page 304 where it claims that a legal description of the property needs to be inserted? That really confused me, because, you know, you need to be looking at this data and thinking critically about it. I am all for, you know, helping our homeless. Again, this is a density bonus deal. There is a lot of variable information in here, and to make a decision tonight on how to proceed with, just given the time factor that your community was able to give over the weekend, I think it's really irresponsible of everybody in our city and our staff. I know there's an emergency crisis with housing, but when you're dealing with such deals that have so many variables on their impact, you need to give people, including yourselves, the time to fully understand everything in it. Thank you. I also hope that you can close this meeting for our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. Could respond, the speaker spoke to vagaries. To respond, the speaker spoke to vagaries in the document.
What I would add to that is that this process of development of these parcels have been underway for several years, has been brought forth to council in detail and with your approval for the last few years. This is the final approvals of documents and loan agreements that have been brought forth to the public and numerous public hearings over the last several years. So I think it is not last minute. We did, there were some minor changes to the regulatory agreement and the subordination agreement, which caused a revision. And I want to thank both our attorney's office and our city clerk office for their tremendous effort and our help in getting this through. But other than that, I think the process and loan documents and everything that's associated has been open and clear and well-understood by both council and by staff.
Yeah, I was going to say, this isn't the first time we've seen this. I have a long shot. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Questions or comments from the council? Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move with the staff recommendation.
Move by Councilmember Warner.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Cooper. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, we have, this is, oops. The 5.03, the affordable housing in lieu fee. Eric Uranga and Susan Colkins stepping on deck.
Good evening, council. I'd like to introduce Susan Colkins, our housing technician. And for your consideration is the adoption of the city's affordable housing sales prices, rental rates, maximum income limits, and affordable housing in lieu fee rate for this coming year. And with that, Susan.
Thank you, council and mayor. Sorry, I talk softly. So the maximum, oops. Thank you. The maximum income limits adopted annually by city council are used for participation in the city's affordable housing programs and are based on data for Alameda County published annually by the Department, I mean, the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Here we have a sample of the proposed maximum income limits for a three-person household and the for-sale prices and rent limits for both the low and moderate income categories. The city's affordable for-sale housing prices and rental rates are derived from these income limits for each category and are calculated so that a household pays no more than 30% of its gross income for housing costs. The public hearing portion of this item is focused on establishing the affordable housing in lieu fee, which is charged in instances where the developer is allowed to pay the fee as an alternative to providing 15% of the total units at an affordable price within a new development. It also is allowed when there are less than 10 units in a development or when there is a fractional unit. The in lieu fee is then used for creating affordable housing programs such as the Mortgage Assistance Program and affordable housing developments like Chestnut Square, Carmen Avenue Apartments, and Sunflower Hill. The method of calculating the in lieu fee is specified in the Livermore Municipal Code The fee equals 15% of the difference between the development cost of a market-rate unit and the average for-sale price between a low and moderate income below market-rate unit. The fee is then divided by the average unit size of 2,000 square feet, arriving at the per-square-foot affordable housing in lieu fee. This fee is economically equivalent to the cost of providing onsite affordable units. Staff recommendations, sorry. Staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution establishing the 2017 maximum income limits for very low, low, median, and moderate income households, based on California Department of Housing and Community Development's income limits, the maximum affordable for-sale housing prices and rent limits for those income categories, and the affordable housing in lieu fee for residential development of $25,37 per square foot. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available. Staff's available for comments, questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff at this point? You did say that to qualify for affordable housing, someone could make an income of $72,000.
Correct, as a three-person household.
I mentioned that to people around the country, and their jaws drop.
That's low income.
Yeah. It's very expensive to be low-income here, unfortunately, in the Tri-Valley.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, I have two cards, Evan Branning and Greg Scott. Mr. Branning?
Good evening again. This is the one I actually intended to speak on, so my name is Evan Branning, and I'd like to speak on in lieu fees and ask, actually, if the city amend their policy to not accept in lieu fees for larger developments. In lieu fees are typically used as a way of segregating housing and building low-income sections of the city. It's been used for very admirable developments. However, evidence has shown that by building low-income housing, low to moderate income housing, along with market-rate developments, helps to boost up the, boost up the wealth and status of the people who are living there, helps to move them out of lower-income status, and helps them to actually develop better economically over the long run. Allowing, or requiring that those developments are built alongside other market-rate developments will help lower crime rates, help boost the economic development of Livermore, help reduce the need for services for people in low-income developments, and should help lift them out of poverty as well. I understand the need for in lieu fees when doing smaller developments, as well as for fractional units, but in larger developments, it should be required, anything over 10 units. In addition, I'd like to thank the city for the use of the density bonus on projects such as Chestnut Square. Myself, as well as others, have been very much in support of using those density bonuses to help get more additional low-income to moderate-income housing in Livermore. It is quite a challenge to be able to afford rents or housing in this area. As you know, the entire region is going through a housing crisis. We cannot fix it on our own, but we can make sure that Livermore communities are the best they possibly can be, and by integrating in low-income housing with market-rate developments, we end up building a much stronger, healthier, and happier community for everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Branning.
I've got a question for staff.
Yes.
I thought there was some case law regarding whether there was an option with respect to these fees. Could staff elaborate on that?
So there have been a number of challenges and basis for in lieu fees in the past. If you could help me focus, I can.
Well, I thought that, I thought that developers, there was some case law that said the developers had an option, that we couldn't force it. Is that?
During the depths of the recession, the state came forward and says, you could not require a must, you could not have a must-build requirement for your city. It said they had to allow the developers to what we call fee out, or pay the in lieu fee, rather than developing the units. That has, that is no longer the case.
Oh, so we do have that option then?
It's returned to you.
Okay, thank you.
And in fact, your ordinance actually is a must-build ordinance to essentially deviate from that, that council permission is needed.
That's correct.
Okay. Greg Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. A 27% increase in the city's affordable housing in lieu fee, it sounds like the magic elixir. It is not. The CAPR report, the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report for the HUD funds, listed the placement of 18 homeless in housing. Lucky 18. What you're doing here is getting a lot of resources to help very few. We do not know how many homeless are out there in Livermore. We, the survey we have is two years old. We talked about science earlier tonight. Science, the word root etymology of science is to know. We need to know about homeless. We have data that's two years old and probably incomplete. And the road we go down here is just resources, 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 to help very few. And I somehow didn't get my point across in speaking earlier tonight. Veterans do go to get resources from the Veterans Administration and do not get what they're entitled to. People go, as the woman I gave an example of that didn't get shelter, people go for resources and do not get what they need. So you're going down the wrong road here. You spend for a miniscule amount of the problem. Great for the lucky 10 in the senior housing project that get housing, but the problem is much bigger, and there needs to be a better allocation of resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Questions or comments from the council? Really? Okay. With the, with respect to the in lieu fees versus building, this is one of the reasons that we have seen some of these developers fee out, is because what we've seen with a development like Chestnut Square, we can leverage those fees and build a lot more housing. Yeah, 15% inclusionary, they hit the lottery. I mean, they're living in a million-dollar house, but that doesn't help a larger number of people that would be able to move into Chestnut Square. There are some cities around here that have a five-year residency, well, it's a five-year affordability period. So they get into the lottery, they win the lottery, and in five years, they can sell the house for market rate. We don't do that here. You saw that we have a 55-year requirement to maintain the affordability of that home. So what our focus here is to leverage the resources that we have to provide the most amount of housing that we can. I recognize the need for more resources. There's a great graph that we had at one of the earlier meetings, and it shows the revenue of the city and the expenses of the city, and those two lines are right on top of each other. That's what we have to spend. So it's a zero-sum game. Whatever we spend on one thing, we have to take from something else. Take it from the library, take it from police, take it from fire. To provide more resources for some, we have to take it away from other resources. So we try to leverage the funding as best we can. There is a tremendous need, we all recognize that, and we continue to find more, more resources. But the need is great, and it's a regional need. So we're, by leveraging these in lieu fees, we can actually maximize the amount of housing that we can provide, as opposed to having a few people hit the lottery. So that's, that's some of the philosophy behind that. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I have another question. I mean, just, I want to make sure I know how to think about this. I mean, in the first order, I would think that the fee should be set to make the developer indifferent between the two. I mean, that's, that's kind of the principle, and what this is doing is making them more indifferent, right? And our real problem isn't, I mean, I say, one of the problems we have is even though we have the affordable housing funds, we don't have land to do it. Whereas if we make it more mandatory, then at least we can maybe build more of these things. Can you kind of clarify my thinking for me, or help me think about this? Is what I'm saying true, or I mean, how do I, how should we think about this?
Well, for example, yeah, I've talked to other mayors about what they do in their cities, and they said, well, use abandoned apartment buildings. We don't have any abandoned apartment buildings. All our apartment buildings are filled, so we don't have a lot of vacancy. Some cities have those, but we don't.
So fundamentally, your affordable program goes back to 1978. It's one of the very first in the state. It has been constantly updated over the years and maintains sort of one of the most robust overall programs. You are correct, it is a must-build requirement first, for the reasons that one of your earlier speakers said, that in many cases, that can result in a better outcome for the city and a better outcome for the residents. Certain affordability classes, however, very low, extremely low, that need an extraordinary amount of services with it, that's not the most effective or efficient way to deal with those issues. The fees are an extremely effective way to leverage other funds, other people's monies. So while we certainly have a preference of doing a must-build requirement, there are lots of advantages to occasionally allowing a portion of the fees, certainly on fractional units, small projects, but even on larger projects, having a bit of that happen through the in lieu fee, and most of the requirement happen onsite. And you've actually seen some of your larger projects do something like that. So the city can actually provide the full range of options across the entire economic spectrum. So from that perspective, there are advantages to how our overall system's been laid out. Your last point was the availability of land, and that is correct. For all developers, market-rate or affordable developers, land is obviously the key to building units to that, and you're aware with our urban growth boundary, we're now talking about infill developments throughout the city. So that's certainly something that your staff works on, works on basically diligently assembling properties. Chestnut, which you approved the latest stages on tonight, was acquired in three, four different transactions?
Yeah.
Yeah, four different transactions over a period of time to make that one large developable site. So those are the challenges that we have as we move forward.
I was just going to add that we've, we've got the must-build requirement, but we do have some creativity that we bring to bear that the council ultimately can review. The Chestnut property, some of it was provided by a donation of land in exchange for that must-build requirement. So the developer provided land instead of building some of the units. We banked the land, we leveraged other resources, so there are a variety of methodologies that we can utilize to put a project together to serve our community.
Councilmember Carling?
Yeah, I thought the report was well-done and certainly very clear. I was curious, though, is what do other cities do? Do they have in lieu fees?
Cities range. Some do not have any, and other ones have, ones very similar to ours, and they range from some just in lieu, some with inclusionary, some with must-build, just a variety of, you know, what cities do. Ours is, we've had it for, I do not know any other city that's had one longer than we have. And ours is, as Mr. Roberts described, is a very robust and aggressive program. We use it to create a huge variety, a range of affordable housing, from ownership to rental to homeless services, to special needs. And I don't think there's a city out there that I can probably say we do more with money that we have in terms of meeting all the different needs. A good example is the two gentlemen that came up. Both of them are correct in what they're saying. We need to develop housing for homeless folks, but also inclusionary housing onsite is very, all the advantages that were described are true, but both need to be, and that's why a combination of fees and must-build is probably the correct. And where that line is drawn is what staff tries to figure out, once the appropriate amount. But both of them are important, and we've been able to do that through our program for quite a few years.
Yeah, so, and Mr. Scott pointed out, it was a 20, I think he said a 27% increase over what it is today, right?
Yes.
And that's because of the jump in the price of housing in town, right?
Absolutely. That is one of the main components. The average sell price for a house in Livermore is now $810,000.
And a jump like from about $700,000 just in the last year?
Yes.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move, we accept staff recommendation.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Carling.
Seconded.
Seconded by Vice-Mayor Spadovski. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. Okay, before we go to 6.02, yes, we're hopping 6.02, 6.01, let's take just a quick five-minute break, and then we'll come back here and then slog through the rest of the evening.
Oh, uh, wait a minute. Are we running yet?
Are we running?
Yeah. Okay, very good. I didn't get the high sign. All right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Min.
Mayor and members of the council, this item is about accessible parking adjacent to the Bankhead Theater. Council directed staff to conduct a preliminary evaluation of the city-owned lot adjacent to the Bankhead Theater to see if accessible parking could be developed on it. So, here's the site plan. Let me orient you. This is Railroad Avenue, Livermore Avenue. Here's the Bankhead Theater. Here's the parking garage. And this is the city-owned parcel just to the east of the Bankhead Theater and west of the pedestrian path connecting to the crosswalk to the parking garage. In short, staff found that accessible parking is operationally feasible on the site. So we've developed two alternatives. One that shows up to eight accessible spots could be developed on the site here with a driveway in the middle. Currently, there's a bus turnout along the frontage and a bus shelter which would need to be relocated a little further to the east. And the project would involve paving the lot, striping it, providing some lighting, some landscaping, some connections to the pedestrian path. We have a second alternative because this bus stop is currently jointly used as a pedestrian loading zone for the Bankhead Theater. So if, excuse me, if some of the spaces were reserved for passenger loading, then we could eliminate the loading zone from the bus stop area and leave it open for bus operations. So the project is expected to cost about $200,000. It's currently not in the capital improvement program. So if council were to direct us tonight to proceed, we would select an alternative regarding how many of the spaces should be ADA compliant, add the project to the capital improvement program. We would need to appropriate funding and then prioritize the project for implementation within the CIP. With that, staff's available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Carling?
Yeah, thanks, Bob. I do have a question about moving the bus stop that goes to the east. How close does it get to the pedestrian path? Is that an issue?
There's enough room right in this area between the pedestrian path to accommodate the shelter.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Coomer?
What other alternatives have you explored to this location?
We were not asked to look at other alternatives. It was to look at developing ADA parking on this alternative.
Okay. I'm just thinking of cars pulling out of there into a crosswalk and that being a very tight fit. So I just, I've got an idea, but I'll run it past you in a minute.
We do have other accessible spaces throughout the downtown, and we've expanded those in, you know, in the past few years.
So I have a question. First of all, I presume that any design you came up with would be deemed safe relative to your standards. That's the presumption. The other thing is, I think I want to point out is that what we're talking about tonight is not actually doing this. We're just getting it into the mix of things to consider. Is that correct?
Yeah, these are just a preliminary evaluation to determine if it's feasible and to determine a rough cost to do so. If council directs us to proceed, we would do more detailed design and evaluation.
Right. And so it's just a putting it in the mix because we, you know, in a couple of months, hopefully, we'll get to a decision as to what we're doing. And so this is my point of view, is it opens up the ability to develop next to, you know, on the east side, west side of the Bankhead. We don't know what we're going to put there, but whatever we put there, we're going to, for a time being, you know, for a certain period of time, will lose spaces. And so this was a, just an alternative. And I think that what Councilmember Coomer pointed out, there'll be other things we can put into the mix. But this is one specific place where we could easily add some spaces that take care of our, at least temporary, need if we do anything in the current area. So it's not a decision to actually do it. It's simply put it into the capital improvement program to be prioritized, to be considered. And any actual decision to do anything would be post a determination of what we're actually developing. Is that correct, the way I describe that?
The issue there is ultimately up to council direction, but yes, that works. What this shows you is you do have an option, gives you a rough cost of that, shows its feasibility. Your next step then would be to direct when and if to implement that.
So I just wanted to make it clear that this isn't like some people might assume, like a final decision or anything. It's just a preliminary beginning. Questions?
Yeah, I just had a quick question for the city manager. I think, if I recall correctly, I don't know what meeting it was at, but one of the matters initiated was to receive an update on the downtown parking study and where we're at with it. Do we have an ETA, one that update with the downtown parking study and all the options? When will that be available?
We were going to be providing a memo to council updating you on the study, and that should be coming soon, actually. I would say within the next week or so.
Okay, because one of the slides tonight, also, I think it's the end slide, is asking for us to allocate the funding for this as well, or is it just, I think that's what it?
So, in other words, the question to staff was to evaluate the feasibility, to determine a conceptual cost, and to outline next steps if you wish to proceed with construction. So that's what's in the information you have before you. So the making an appropriation, which you're not agendized to do this evening, that would be a future step. But when that step happens, depends on what your direction is to us tonight.
Okay, so it's whether or not to proceed with actually funding it, but not actually making the decision to fund it tonight? I was just a little confused by that, on bullet point, to add the project and appropriate funding.
Yes, those are necessary steps if you wish to proceed at this point.
At this point tonight, okay. Because what I would like is an update on the implementation of the downtown parking study, where we're at, and then, you know, not necessarily, it doesn't, it affects the funding portion of it for me. You know, where else 200K can be spent. I just want to see the options before making any final decision. But, yeah, I just was a little concerned about that.
So I want to ask that question because it wasn't my intention. I initiated this to say we'd actually allocate the funding in this time. It was more to just set it up in the, in the mix, so that we'd make that final decision after we had the plans and understood what else we were doing. So is that consistent with what we can do tonight?
You're able to give us direction on next steps on this. So for example, if you can take this and receive it as information and give us no direction at all, and essentially, when you basically complete your deliberations on downtown, you'll say, ah, one of the things we want to include is parking on this location. You already then know what your cost and about what the timing of that would be. You could do that at that point. If you wish to proceed independently in the direction of the council is tonight to say, ah, we'd like to build this as quickly as possible. Our next steps are outlined in the staff report there about what would happen. We would first return to you with a change to your capital improvement program. So what happens next is ultimately up to when the council wants to make a decision on whether to proceed with this, and then what your timing is, you know. My assumption is ultimately that you would like to integrate this with, in your overall decisions and giving us direction on the sites in downtown. This is one of the things that you would consider. You can give us direction this evening on to proceed to this independently, or tell us to integrate that into that larger process.
I would say this is good information. I mean, to know that it's feasible, safe, you know, some reasonable cost. The other thing that I was kind of concerned about in here was when you look at the schedule that you're talking about, it takes a year to build something like this. And if, what, you know, what I'm very concerned about is that when we get around to making a decision, we're actually doing something that's practical and doable in a reasonable period of time. And so one of the reasons I wanted to get through this was, because if this is what we need to do in order to open up the spaces so we can do some development, I wouldn't want it to take a year just for the beginning of something. So is the, is the timeline really, is it, can we make it shorter in reasonable amounts?
So the overall schedule of improvements in downtown to move forward with whatever vision that you ultimately end up with can be tailored to deal with that. You know, there are the sort of the three different aspects of that. Generally, you'd be displacing more projects to basically have it happen faster. My assumption is that depending on which uses you want to move forward most quickly, the hotel on the west side, or east side, or wherever that happens, or what other, the other pieces of development, you'd want this coordinated with those processes. I don't think that those, you know, based on what we know now about this particular project, once you, if you gave us direction on those other projects, this could be incorporated so it would not delay the beginning of construction.
Okay.
If that's the question that you want?
Yeah.
Is that the question you were asking is?
Yeah, that's the answer I was looking for to the question I think I asked. So the other thing, though, that's related to it, if I could, is that we've got a lot of buildings that is also is a precursor to anything we do that have got to be demolished. And so I'm looking at these timelines and things like that. So in a, sort of in a related thing, and maybe I'll do it appropriate in matters initiated, but it seems to me that we need to get going on that stuff, too. So I'll, I'll leave that to matters initiated. But these, yeah, I just really concerned that we do this in a way that we can build on a reasonable schedule. So I think you've answered the question. So thanks.
Questions? Staff, okay. This was originally zoned for the garbage container, right? For the, for the site?
There were plans to put a garbage container here for the Livermore Valley Center. The zoning actually allows many different uses.
Okay, good. That's one of the original thoughts. Okay.
Correct.
All right. And just to be clear, I remember you said something right. So Jesse, the dog, is just to the upper right. And those little longitudinal things, those are benches. So if this were ADA parking and also drop off, people could be dropped off and then they would just find one of those benches for their driver to catch up with them, right?
That's correct. The idea is we would connect one of these areas here to the path, and you could get right to the benches.
Okay. And then they could park in the, if there was overflow, they could park in the parking structure and then meet up with their passenger. Okay.
One other thing I thought I want to mention, I was talking with, about this with Nancy Bankhead, and she made a good suggestion that there be impenetrable barriers between the parking and the walkway. And I would assume that's kind of included in the cost.
We could certainly provide some separation barriers between those spaces.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, I'm going to open up public comment. I have Beth Wilson, Jay Davis, Kelly Cousins.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and City Council and staff. I am Beth Wilson, 1503 Blue Bell Court. I would urge the council to move ahead as quickly as is reasonably possible to create the accessible parking at the immediate east of the Bankhead Theater. It's an excellent idea, and it certainly is needed. Alan Frank and Peggy came earlier. Alan spoke. I know they're arts patrons. There are many people here, and there is definitely a clear need for more accessible parking. This is something that can be built, hopefully quickly and easily, rather than waiting for everything to get completely done. I know there are plans, which some of my good friends back here are going to speak on, for an arts education project that is being planned to be at that very site. It is in very, very early stages, and for it to come to fruition will be, I think, many, many years, at least several years. And this lot can be used, if necessary, it can be used for a few years until it's time for that other facility to be built. But for it to sit there and wait for years as an empty lot seems to me to not be a very productive use of it. As far as six spaces versus eight spaces, I am lucky enough to be able to perform as an orchestra member pretty regularly at the Bankhead Theater. It's just such a wonderful thing. But I have, as well as other people, have to bring heavy percussion equipment and that sort of thing. And yes, that would be convenient for us to have, but I think it's more important to use it as accessible parking. We pull into the driveway space there at the loading dock, unload the instruments, and go to the parking lot, and we're able to do that sort of thing. So I think being able to put in as many accessible spots as possible is the best way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Jay Davis, Kelly Cousins, Jeff Caskey.
Mayor Marchand, members of the council, I want to first reassure you that this has nothing to do with the downtown planning process, should you have worried about that. It's an own goal of my own, so don't worry about it. I'm very pleased with what I see here. I have two very positive statements to make and one statement of caution. The first positive statement is one that Mayor Marchand has already alluded to. Sunday with Jesse will stay where it is, which is already one of the most loved things in this town. So I think that's a great element of the design. I parked for over four years in the lot on the other side of the Bankhead when I was running the Hertz Foundation. And this is a wonderful development because it more than doubles the amount of parking, and more importantly, takes that parking out of a fairly dangerous parking lot, which has a lot of traffic and moves very rapidly. I think a separately held lot like this is absolutely a wonderful idea for ADA parking. The concern I'll raise is to echo something that my friend Alan Frank said earlier this evening. Mary and I drove from P Street to Maple today and discovered a total of two ADA compliant parking spaces on First Street. And so if the essence is not just to serve the Bankhead, which we all love, but shouldn't be the focus of this activity, we need to look at First Street and say, what are we doing to put parking places in front of the restaurants, in front of the stores along First Street? I mean, to my mind, city manager can correct me, this is sort of a 6:00 AM Thursday morning with five guys and two buckets of paint, if you really want to go at it pretty quickly. It's not a major project. It's some restriping. Oh, quit flinching over there, Mark. It's not, it's not some restriping. It's some restriping and moving a few botsnots around if you want to do it. And I think we really should make that commitment to look the length of that street and see what we can do. So we're not just serving the Bankhead. I'll reserve any comments about the arts complex till that comes up later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Kelly Cousins, Jeff Caskey, Lindsey Murray.
Good evening. Thank you, mayor and council members and staff for allowing me to speak today. I'm a member of the Tri-Valley Arts Career Center Exploratory Committee. And joining me on this committing is an exciting group of community leaders, including Eric Swalwell's Office, Chief of Staff, Supervisor Scott Hagerty, Chief of Staff, University of California Merced, Lea Azon, Los Pacitas College Interim President, Dublin and Pleasanton Unified School District Staff, Tri-Valley Regional Occupation Program Superintendent, Livermore Performing Arts Center Executive, and also La Familia Counseling. Superintendent Kelly Bowers has been enthusiastically working towards a plan to provide this hands-on education career center for students located in that exact same spot, including the courtyard next to the Bankhead. This, we've been working with hiring consultants to do some feasibility studies. The feasibility study would look at the strengths and weaknesses of this proposal, identify a level of interest, specific needs, any kind of timeline, and also to evaluate the prospects for sustainability and success. And we've already met once, and we're meeting again soon with our consultants that we are hiring to proceed with this feasibility study. So if we put parking in that spot, I think that would certainly discourage feasibility study and the plans that are going forward for this wonderful opportunity for high school students and students in the Tri-Valley area to have opportunities to learn hands-on culinary arts classes, visual and narrative arts, performing arts, the type of programs that oftentimes keep kids in schools because they can find a career and, right out of high school, get a job in the culinary arts, for example. And also, it's very close to locations where they can use these skills. So I would suggest that tonight that you put this on hold until our feasibility study gets underway, which should be pretty, pretty soon. And if this indeed is an issue that has something to do with the location of a hotel, there might be some other alternatives for an, for the ADA parking elsewhere. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cousins. Jeff Caskey, Lindsey Murray, Jim Murray.
Good evening, once again. Jeff Caskey. I'm going to go back to the beginning of the meeting and echo a comment from Ms. Cops, actually. It may be a little, working on our listening would be a useful thing here. After the ENRA item, some council members lashed out at the negative public tone that was apparently all they heard, missing my optimism and that of others, that synthesis and consensus are looking more possible with each piece of analysis and public input. So here we are at 6.02, and not surprisingly, different people are hearing different things. Some see four to eight new parking spots, and what the heck, let's spend the money. It's not that much money, really. Others see a preemptive strike to start fixing a flawed east side hotel plan, ahead of the report that many of you said you were waiting to see before making any decisions on anything related to the downtown plan. There's no need for this in the west side plan as a good, as there is good space for handicap parking, which already exists and could exist throughout the construction process. Likewise, trash collection can be already accommodated in the west side plan, but the report cryptically notes the need to solve the trash program. Quote, "The city would need to incorporate the trash facility into the design for the parking area, or identify another location for the facility." Sort of, in the part that isn't quite written there, it says, "Assuming an east side hotel." I understand this is just one step. It doesn't lock in the parking, or for that matter, lock in an east side hotel. It is not an absolute. I'm not being an absolutist. It does, however, feed the impression that the council here and in the ENRA earlier has a bit of a thumb on the scale. The staff report does note that this is a mediocre solution. You only get to the parking from the west. You only leave to the east, immediately hitting the crosswalk. It's already enough of a problem that we've been talking here on other evenings about how to solve the problem of cars directly impinging that crosswalk. It may be safe legally, but I know that we've had the conversation here. We can't pretend that that's a nice, safe intersection. And for those who are dropping somebody off in that space, if that's the way we use it, there's no direct access to the parking garage so they get to go and loop back around again. It's a bad solution. So if you have that money burning, and it's not, again, not a big amount of money, burning a hole in your pocket, I actually echo Councilmember Warner's suggestion. Let's go take a look at these remaining condemned buildings on the, on the lots that we need, we know need to get knocked down for any of the solutions, regardless of what the plan looks like. They'll create more parking, and then we can, if we, we can create the additional handicap parking along First Street because we can take a couple of those First Street spaces and compensate for them with the spaces we create by knocking down the old Carol Jean and some of the other buildings there on that side. So I think that we can, we can solve the problem that you're looking at. We can take a look at the handicap parking issue without making the optics look like there's this lean towards an east side hotel. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsey Murray, Jim Murray, Ellen Burnham.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for letting me speak. Tonight, I urge the council to table this project at a cost of $200,000 until the report on placeworks on the downtown project is presented on November 27th and decisions are made regarding the total downtown plan. Parking, as we all know, is a major concern for us, for the residents, and there are several parking lots included in our plan, in all plans for, under consideration. Moving ahead and spending money now seems piecemeal to me when we don't know what, when we don't even know what changes might occur on Railroad Avenue to accommodate an expansion of the existing parking garage, if that is the way that Livermore wants to go. If the need for more handicap parking is critical, and based on the speakers that I've heard tonight, it does sound, it's quite critical, I would suggest that the city reallocate spaces in the lot right next to the Bankhead. That would give closer access for the handicap people and to businesses and theaters, and this could be implemented faster, quite fast, I would think. Jay Davis will do it for you, with less expense. Again, please table this project until the whole downtown plan is decided on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murray. Jim Murray, Ellen Burnham, and Lynn Sepola.
Hi, I'm Jim Murray. We've been residents of Livermore for 43 years. Thank you for listening to me tonight. I would like to weigh in on the idea of delaying this parking proposal also. I think to decide on this issue before, you know, we know what's going to happen with the rest of the downtown is premature. The location might be the only option for the East Side Hotel location, for additional handicap parking, but it certainly wouldn't be optimum for the West Side Hotel. A much better location would be just west of the bankhead, as Lindsey just said, which is much closer to the theater and avoids the hassle of having to drive around the entire block for drop-off to get back to the parking opportunities. If handicap parking and drop-off zone are required in the near future, that existing parking area west of the bankhead could be restripped for a small fraction of this $200,000 cost. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Ellen Burnham, Lynn Sepola, Gene King.
Yeah, Ellen Burnham, on Findlay Way. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the rest of the council. I'm here because I read a couple of letters to the editor of the Independent, and I thought, well, that really doesn't seem to make sense. And I know these people. I don't want to say that I don't honor their opinion, but I'd like to point out that this particular parking lot is not a referendum either on the location of the hotel, which I really don't have an opinion on which side it would be on, or that it is, or referendum on the career center, which I think is an excellent idea, but is several years off. What it really is, it's, we've heard people talk about the parking lot on the west side of the bankhead. In the community group plan, there's going to be a parking garage there, and that's where is proposed to be a science center, which I am an advocate for. So if that is ever going to be built, that parking lot's got to go, and where are the handicap people going to be parking? So what we're really talking about is a lot of inconvenience during this downtown construction, where there's going to have to be a dance, where you're moving various things around. And this is one of the steps that's going to have to be taken as part of this dance as you're moving around to maintain parking and accessibility and all these sorts of things. Is it, it is not a lot of money. I don't know how much, I think the figures were something like $40 million to do this development downtown. $200,000 compared to 40 million is just really not very much. And it is a necessary part, at least from my perspective, in terms of being able to maintain the flexibility to get people parked and moved around as this transition. And in the long term, of course, Career Center would be fine, but that's years off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnham. Lynn Sepola, Gene King, and Denise Ledden.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and staff. My name is Lynn Sepola, and I've been disabled for 25 years. Disabled parking certainly helped me. However, 6.02 is puzzling. You know, major development was done 10 years ago, requiring the construction of the Bankhead Theater and retail spaces and allocation of disabled parking spaces, certainly welcome for disabled drivers. To my knowledge, there really has been no push by the council to add significantly more disabled parking spaces. So here's my questions. Why now? Nowhere in the staff does it say that more disabled parking spaces are needed. You certainly heard in testimonials that we do need them more, but no other options were studied. This is a piecemeal thing. Restriping parking stripes, as Jay said, or Jim, Lindsey Murray, is a much simpler and cheaper, if that's the issue, is to get more disabled parking places. You can put more disabled parking places in the current garage. So I don't quite understand what's the purpose of that. Right now, you know the answer. So $400,000 to develop this thing, end of story. Shelve it and go on. Let's wait until the final plan is done, and then we'll see what needs to be happened. But to go any further, more, once you've got the idea that is about $200,000, this is sort of pointless. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sepola. Gene King, Denise Ledden, Alex Gonzalez.
When I, Gene King, when I first looked and read the agenda and the things, I actually was not very happy, because it said you were going to do this, and it also said to find out where the money was coming from. But I think I've heard, when I came here tonight, that you're not really going to go forward with this right now, that you are looking at the possibility of putting it there, and you're going to look at it. And so I encourage you very much to look at all the different possibilities. I hope you will look at this. I hope you will look at restriping the west side of the bankhead. I hope you will look at, as Mr. Caskey suggested, as he brought some plans, looking at all of the plans and looking at everything, not just looking at this, but looking at everything before we start. And I think maybe that's where you're going. So I hope you'll do this, because actually, I think putting those eight parking spots over there are ridiculous. So, but that's it. But I think it's a part of your process where you're really going to look at everything before you do anything. And so I think that short term is make more handicap parking places over on the west side. It can be done really easily. If you've noticed, actually, on the West Side A Plan, I'll bring it back again, there is going to be a lot of handicapped, if you follow that plan, and there is going to be more parking next to the bankhead. So again, I think the ACC thing is a wonderful project. I think by putting this saying you're going to go ahead with the thing on the east side of the bankhead will put a glitch kind of in there when they're going out to a feasibility. So let's not kind of diminish that. Let's see if that can go forward too. So I really thank you. I think you are going to just look at all the different possibilities, and I think you're not going to go forward with this right away. And thank you. Okay, bye.
Thank you. Denise Ledden, Alex Gonzalez, William Dunlop.
Denise Ledden. I have been on the Livermore Cultural Arts Council for two years now. I am in favor of the Future Arts Career Center for our young people. Please do not turn the triangular plot next to the bankhead into parking. First Street, make First Street all handicap parking between the movie theater and Patsy's Pizza. Then I wouldn't even start looking for parking in that area. It would just force me to Second Street, and this would help improve traffic flow. Rajneesh Khanna gave me a letter to read, Dear Mayor John Marchand and City Council Members. I wish to speak today regarding the importance of supporting the Arts Career Center on the land east of the Bankhead Theater. I have been involved with early planning for a culinary arts program, which will be a part of the education center. The culinary arts program will provide workforce and career development for youth and adults interested in being a part of a vibrant and growing industry in the Tri-Valley area. Further, there is no culinary arts program offered at Los Pacitas College, leaving an unfilled gap in the area. The Arts Career Center with its associated restaurant will position itself as one of the leading culinary arts programs, with hands-on experience and opportunity to indulge in events at the restaurants and the Bankhead Theater. The location will be central in serving the needs of future downtown businesses, as well as the downtown hotel. It appears that having the hotel on the east side needing handicap parking at the location will be a serious liability to the community workforce and economic development efforts. Are we debating whether we should have parking spaces instead of an education center catering to education and job-oriented training? Then this is a no-brainer. The education center fits the original model for downtown development with its strategical location and purpose of local workforce development, providing enhanced local work and living experiences. I hope the city council will vote in favor of a robust economic development and education over the need of a few parking spaces. With kind regards, Rajneesh Khanna. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Gonzalez, William Dunlop, and Craig Bueno.
Hello, I am Alex Gonzalez, and I am here because I am a Boy Scout in this community, and I'm currently working on my Citizenship and Community Mayor Badge, and I've been hearing all of these, all of this talk about this, and I thought I would like to do part of my Citizenship and Community Mayor Badge, part of this, part of my, talk about this with my mayor badge. So I have one question, one statement. Personally, what I'm understanding from this is that it's going to be temporary before, until the education center can be, you know, finalized and built. And I just wanted to let you know that even though it may be temporary, once it's finished and people start using it, some people might see it as permanent, and when you eventually move to, eventually to the smaller ship, you might face resistance, because people might say it is a permanent benefit and must stay. But my question for you is, how can, I guess, in general, young people, I'm apparently the only one here, you know, be more informed about, I guess, you know, helping the elderly or in general, you know, get more in touch with the community council, because we live here too. I mean, so, I mean, currently, I'm a senior in high school, and I am leaving, but I plan on coming back and, you know, like to grow old here and maybe have to use a handicap in the later future. But how can, you know, young people be informed about this in a reasonable manner?
Very good. Well, welcome, and thank you for your input tonight. But exactly what you're doing, to, you know, come forward, make comments, all of our agendas, all the information is posted online on the website. All of these are livestreamed. All of the meetings are livestreamed, and if it's not convenient, you can pull it up on on-demand on TV 30. So there are several ways that you can stay engaged, and look forward to you continuing to be involved. So thank you for your comments tonight.
Thank you.
William Dunlop and Craig Bueno.
William Dunlop, St. Helena Court. And I've been following this somewhat, and it does concern me, just like the issue about the hotels. If you do something and people think it's going to be permanent or whatever, it may change the attitude toward people moving forward. And I think the proposal that's there, to lay out a career center, have kind of the things that really work, as you're aware, that there's the group in one of the schools that does, well, they cater a lot of meetings, and they have a lot of interest in learning that career of being a chef and so on. We're talking about the same kinds of things here, even broader, and we don't want to hinder it by all of a sudden someone saying, well, I would have supported that, but it's already been paved over and you don't have that space. So it's got to be clear to everyone that this is temporary. Now, your bigger problem is, eight spaces aren't going to fix the problem for the handicap parking. So you need to go throughout the city and find more spaces, and the eight is trivial in solving that problem. So the question is, do you really need it? Or are you willing to stand by and make sure that it doesn't inhibit a really important education thing from happening here in the city? Thank you.
And finally, Craig Bueno.
Good evening, Mayor, council, manager. My name's Craig Bueno, 30-plus-year resident here. I'm just coming tonight. I happen to be aware, oh, and first off, I think it's a great problem we have, that we're short parking stalls and housing. I mean, as a community, that's a great problem to have, because we're doing a good job here, and, you know, it's a desirable place. Our downtown's thriving. It's a good problem. I mean, there's a lot worse problems to try to fix. I'm here tonight just because I happened to become aware several months ago of an evolving process of this Arts Career Center. As someone who's spent well over 20 years trying to benefit children in this community and hope with what years I have left to continue doing that endeavor, it just seems real exciting. There's a lot of components to it. I'm not on this exploratory committee, but I've become aware of some of the information. It does, it sounds exciting. I mean, being able to offer those type of opportunities to children in conjunction with a thriving dining downtown, working cooperatively with those businesses, that's exciting. And I think it's exciting, you know, for the whole community. And given that, I would simply just ask that procedurally, that we're positioned as a city to help, at least, it is, it's probably several years because of funding and things like that, but that at least procedurally we're positioned so that the city could become aware of, if not supportive, of a process, and at least not put any stumbling blocks in that process. Given that a feasibility study is a, this is $200,000, I think, a feasibility study, I heard a number thrown out around $40,000, that they're trying to raise to do this feasibility study. So it seems like a lower threshold to get that done, but that we not put any hurdles in the way of that in the meantime. At least we get through that process, let that exploratory group get through that process before taking any kind of an action that might act as a hurdle, just in the interest of youth in the community. And I'm not one of the youth in the community anymore.[1524.13][1524.13](laughter) Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Bueno. Okay, that's all the cards that I've got. So let's bring it back to the council. Let's see, this was Councilmember Warner's idea to bring this up, so let's hand it off to you.
Stirred up another hornet's nest. I want to make a few comments, and I'll resonate with, you know, a few people picked up on the fact that this isn't committing us to anything, it was to get it into the mix. But I would like to just respond to some of the comments I made, because it, they, you know, I really like accuracy, and I don't know that I'm hearing it. So for instance, I hear on the one side, oh, there's no problem with the West Side Plan, and because it's got plenty of this and that. But the West Side Plans I've seen all have something next to the bankhead. And all I'm saying is what Mr. Burnham said, is you have to replace those spots. Why you do that? They don't just all of a sudden go get levitated, right? So, and then the fact that there's this Arts Career Center, and we don't want to do it, I think it was also pointed out, Mr. Dunlop, it's very clear that should we go down this path, and of course, we're not deciding to go down this path, but it's very, we just put it in there, it's temporary, because we have to be able to build this project. And what I don't see enough, I mean, some people are now beginning to trip to this, we have to build it. And in order to build it, we've got to replace the spaces. Now, if we start, and we should, I believe, on First Street, restriping and resetting that up, that takes away other parking spaces. And I've spent, I'll just say this, I've spent a lot of hours thinking about how we're going to build these projects, whether it's on the east or the west. And our biggest problem is making sure we have at every stage adequate parking. And that's where this is coming from, and we need to do that. And we will, I anticipate, in the next few weeks, decide on what that parking number is. But this is simply in the mix as something to be considered, and I'm perfectly happy with it being temporary. But we have to do that in order to build the project, as Mr. Burnham pointed out, in my mind. I would, I'm willing to spend hours with anybody who wants to actually think about the reality of building any of these plans, and I got to tell you, it is not simple, and the parking is a big issue. So now, and the West Side Plans that I've seen all do something on that area. So to say that there's no problem is disingenuous, frankly. So the other thing that I would say is we have the Arts Career Center, so it's a great idea. And they talk about the feasibility study. I'll just point out, I was at the LCAC meeting last time, and there were a couple of questions that came up. So for one, do a feasibility study. Is the feasibility study going to consider other options? Answer was no. And now, these are the same people that say, oh, you know, this parking and this temporary thing, we ought to think about all other options. Well, when it comes to spending tens of millions of dollars, they've already made the decision. Feasibility study is not going to address other options. Other options, one of the big deals with putting the Career Center in that spot is, believe it or not, parking. Because you build that, you're going to have to add parking. Parking is a big issue downtown. So all I ask is that people that get into this and get spun up on it, just become real, and when they ask for a broad spectrum of thinking and studies, in one hand, that they also be willing to do that in the other. And I'm just asking for reasonableness here. But believe you me, parking is a big deal in allowing us to build any plan. And whether it's east side or west side, both plans, here to fore. And whether it's east side or west side, both plans, here to fore, everything I've seen wipes out those spaces for a period of time while whatever is replacing it is done. So where I'm at on this is I've got sufficient information to know that this is feasible, know approximately how much it would cost, know how long it would take to do, and I know we can accelerate it. So where I'm coming at, I got enough information, and we'll wait until we, I mean, I would just assume, wait until we've made the decision as to what the rest of the downtown is. But I think this did what I needed it to do. That's where I'm at. So put it into the mix for the CIP. I totally agree that the other places to, you know, on McLeod, on First Street, with the vacant buildings, should all be considered. But we did have some speakers here talking tonight. It's very convenient right there. So the convenient spots that would get wiped out when we build something on the west side of the Bankhead need to go somewhere for a period of time. The other thing is, on the Career Center, I can't believe that we would be into building that before we got the rest of downtown done. So, and if you think about the staging for downtown, to build out downtown, five years. You, I mean, just got to get real about this. So to think that we're going to stop the downtown development, wait for five years until this other thing happens, and then start again, then we're down another 10 years. So that doesn't make any sense to me. And so that's where I'm coming from. The other thing that I think is very important to realize, what came up in the staff report, right now, the current plans call for putting a garbage facility there. We need, I believe, to say that we're not going to put the garbage facility there because that's even worse problem than having a temporary parking lot. So let's get, let's make, I would suggest that what we do is say, "We'll put the garbage facility on the other side of the Bankhead. No matter what we do there, that's where that'll go, and that area will stay clear of it." And frankly, having a garbage facility as your main entrance into your thing from your parking area doesn't make any sense to me. So I say we're not allocating funds for this parking lot. We are putting it into the mix, is what I would recommend, but I do think we should make, give direction that we're not going to put the garbage facility there. That's where I'm at.
Just to build a little bit on what you were saying, and I agree, staging is going to be critically important. And, yeah, we heard comments tonight that, "Well, this just assumes that the East Side Hotel is going to be there." But this is why I focused on the importance of we're defining the key elements, parking, the hotel, the open space. We haven't come up with a plan yet. We're still working on that. So I've seen a number of elements to this, and I've seen elements where there was an artisan market sitting right on top of the ADA spaces west of the Bankhead, a large market. I've seen other plans where there's a conference center. I've seen other plans where there's a three-story building with a museum in it. But every one of those has taken up the accessible parking. So this is a plan on what do you do when you're staging this? Those were all plans assuming a West Side Hotel. It was putting things on that parcel because it's a key place. So where do you put the ADA parking? Now, we heard tonight that we has a desperate need for additional ADA parking. I agree with the speakers, we need more on First Street. But when, when the parking spaces go away west of the Bankhead, as Mr. Burnham pointed out, you need to put them somewhere. Because I've seen a number of plans where there are other things other than a hotel going there. So when other things go there, what happens to the ADA parking? This is a suggestion on how we phase those plans in, regardless of where the hotel goes. Something's going to go there. Something's going to be in that parking. So this is an alternative plan on how do you make that work? How do we stage it? Councilmember Carley?
Yeah, thanks for the, for everybody that spoke. I like the way Mr. Burnham put it, that this is, at least this is my point of view as well, is that this is not a referendum on the east versus west hotel location, nor is it a referendum on the Arts Career Center. And I guess I'm a little disappointed to think that if we were to decide to put parking there, that the feasibility study for the Arts Career Center might be dead. I just don't understand that. I don't understand that point of view. The Arts Career Center, the other question I have, or the other thought that's going through my mind is, why is this the only location for the Arts Career Center? And I don't have the answer to that, but that's at least what I've been wondering. So those are the thoughts going through my mind. I do think that we've heard loud and clearly from the citizens that open space and parking are uppermost in people's mind, and now we've, and we certainly heard tonight about the need for handicap parking. And yet, we have a lot of people that are against providing more parking and handicap. And I just, this is the things that sort of perplex me. So that's where I'm, that's what I'm thinking about. But I think that to Councilmember Warner's point of view, if we think about this as accepting what the, or accepting what we've heard from staff tonight, that's feasible and approximate costs, we obviously are going to have to make a decision if we do go forward, what, you know, does this, how do the priorities change when the CIP? But it also will factor into the larger program with what we do with downtown.
Councilmember Coomer?
I may. As the only one in the building, apparently, that uses a mobility device, let me offer my suggestions here. I've consulted with park districts throughout the state of California about building accessible parking and things, and I'll tell you why this, I think, is not a good plan, and I'll give you an alternative. You're just next door to Cream. If you've ever seen Cream on a summer night, there are small children running up and down that walkway and around Cream, and you've got disabled drivers coming out and turning to the right. I'm sorry, I'm going to get technical here a little bit. During the day when the Ace Train empties out, you've got a green light coming out of the main building, and now you'll have people turning right out of this parking. There will be confusion. There are pedestrians. There are a lot of things happening, and I know my 90-year-old mother still drives, and I would hate to put her in a condition where she's going to have to see people walking across the street, cars turning around in front of her, and trying to make that work. And then there's children in the way that may be running back and forth, not paying attention to what may or may not be coming out of there. So that's my biggest concern. How's that? I didn't even address the downtown and where the hotel's going to go, right? It's all about, I just want to make it safe for people walking by. The pedestrian pathway, you know, it's going to end up being too close, I think, to where these things are, unless we have some kind of a divider built in, which will certainly make it more permanent than it sounds right now if this gets to standing. And here's my alternative, and it's a real simple one, and I'm surprised, I'm really surprised with the amount of intelligence in this room that nobody has thought of it. But we have the McLeod Street, right across the street. We have the capacity, if we wanted to put in six more spaces on McLeod, we could do that. There isn't much longer of a walk to the Bankhead. It's shorter to walk to the restaurants on First Street, which will probably be attended more than the shows at the Bankhead on any given night, on a Tuesday night, that's where people will be going, and they'll help us there. There is capacity on South K Street, next to the current spot, right, South K on both sides of the street, outside the Chinese restaurant. I know these things because I have mentioned to the city staff long before I was even on the LARPD Board of Directors. That's why there are spots on Second Street and South K and on South J at the end, but by Riada. I yell a lot, or used to. But it doesn't make sense to have an ice cream facility with, full of small kids and cars having to turn right with no other alternative. You know, there's a zillion ways you could run that green light coming out of the, you know, for the crosswalk and for the municipal parking lot to empty out, but they add to more confusion and perhaps consequences that we don't want to have to deal with. I thought about it after being down there the last few days, we have capacity all over downtown for more disabled spots. I'm welcome to work with city engineers, city staff, to go over the places I have in mind, to, I know how these things are configured, I know how they should be configured, I know how they're not downtown yet, but this is not a good location. It's got nothing to do with the Arts Center, Seacoast spoke to that, it's a safety issue getting in and out of there. If you're unloading passengers also, if that turns out to be one of the things, that complicates it even more because you're going to have disabled people parking out while you're loading and unloading passengers, and it can be very confusing if you're an elderly driver or otherwise don't have, you're using hand controls or other devices to drive with. So I'm, yeah, I prefer a look that we take a look at McLeod and we go to the, and putting a couple more spaces on South K, next to the current spaces where there is space next to the driver's side. There are options, put it that way. And some of the places like South K and Second Street is very dangerous when you have a disabled driver, when people are coming down second and they're making a right, whoops, past Wells Fargo. To get to the ramp onto the sidewalk, you have to go around the back of your car and go down to the corner. And I've almost had, you know, bullfights with cars coming around the corners here because they come around fast, and I'm essentially in the middle of the street. So it's not, we've had no happy collisions there yet, but it's one of those things, and I could go into a long diatribe about that. But my main concern is that we look, we take a look at the, it's probably cheaper to go on McLeod, and it enables restriping, remeasuring things, and then putting it together. That shouldn't be a very long procedure, but will also allow those businesses along the street, several restaurants on the south side of First Street, to have disabled access there. There are currently two spaces at McLeod and First. There's capacity for far more than that. We could easily take as many spaces as that and probably take up the whole block, but we don't want to do that. And anyway, ideas. But that's how I think about it. I just, I don't want to take the chance of small children running around out there on a hot summer night while disabled people are trying to pull out of that thing and turn right. And it just, from a traffic engineering point of view, it doesn't sound right to me.
Honored Vice Speaker.
Yeah, and I'm fading fast, by the way, so I'm going to keep it, keep it brief. I got the current plague that's going around. So what I thought I heard from the city manager earlier is whether or not we say go tonight or wait until we have more information about what we're doing with downtown, it doesn't really affect the timeline. So making a decision tonight doesn't accelerate it, nor does it hinder, you know, east side versus west side or anything else that we're doing with downtown. Was that, did I, just making sure that I'm not hallucinating at this point.
You're neither precluding nor encouraging an option by not choosing something, not moving forward this project tonight.
Right, okay. So with that said, I think it's something that we need to keep the option open and keep it in the mix. I'm just not, at this point, willing to commit funding or any other measures going forward with us being kind of closer to the downtown decision. So I'm not going to add to anything else that anybody else said tonight. I just think that it's kind of a moot point, that it's neither going to accelerate nor decelerate the process. So I think we need to keep it in mind.
We've identified a solution, a potential solution.
A potential solution during the construction phase of whatever's happening, or, that being said, if it's, if things are delayed, then maybe we go back and revisit this as another solution to some of the accessible parking from downtown. But I'm still very interested in reading that memo about what our, what the status of our parking. Because we did, we did an extensive parking study for downtown, and we had recommendations, and there were analysis of the number of accessible parking spots, if I recall correctly, in that study, and recommendations. So I just don't want to throw that study out the window and start saying, "Let's do it here, let's do it there." I would like to see where this fits in the context of that study, so.
Okay. Further comments? Anybody care to make a motion? Or, okay, well, we appreciate the information. Thank you very much. And this is, this is another, another option to consider and have in the mix, and I certainly appreciate a, an expert's point of view on that. So thank you, Councilmember Coomer. All right. Moving on to 6.01. Thank you for all your comments tonight, greatly appreciate it. Yom Yehudah, thank you. Alex, we'll see you, see you again. Moving on to 6.01, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Honorable Mayor, as our Administrative Services Director takes his seat there, we did want to note that we're very proud to bring you your CAFER this evening. And one of the things that obviously makes the information usable is not only having the information necessary, and you'll hear more about the summary of that in Mr. Alessio's report, but also the timeliness of it. And so this particular report, this is the second earliest that we've ever produced this report. And from that perspective, it allows you to have a much clearer picture of where we are sooner in the process, so that you can feed that into your overall policy decision-making as we move forward. With that, I'll have Mr. Alessio take it away.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thanks for the intro, Mark. I want to express my appreciation for saving the best for last. I appreciate that.
Fine-looking beard you got working there, let me say.
Appreciate everyone waiting for this report. So considering the time, I'll try to get through the material pretty quickly. So Mark set it up pretty well. I'm here, this is basically looking for the council to accept our, not just our CAFER, our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, but all the various compliance reporting that's required by the city each year. So this is the second earliest that the CAFER's been presented to council. So when I first arrived, typically, the audit report would be finished by December 31st and presented to council sometime in January. So if you've ever taken an accounting course, even a basic accounting course, one of the principles they say is timeliness is extremely important with your financial data. So we've strived to bring this to you on a more timely basis each year. Just for the record, the one time this was produced earlier than this was in 2013. So it was October 4th then. So the other items before you are your Measure B compliance, Measure BB compliance, Measure F compliance, Bike and Pedestrian Projects Financial Statements, Agreed Upon Procedures for Prop 111 Appropriations Limit, Horizon's Youth and Family Services Program Statement and Final Budget and Costs Claimed. And this year, your single audit report is also included. So typically, even though we've been able to bring your financial statements much earlier than in prior years, this is the first time we've actually gotten your federal grant compliance done at the same time as the CAFER. So that's a pretty big achievement for us. Typically, because the deadlines are different for that, it's not actually due to the federal government until March of next year, we always sort of delay that and do it later. But this year, we had it all done at the same time. So that's pretty exciting for us. So for the CAFER this year, we implemented GASB74 and GASB77. Let me talk real briefly about 74. It's basically financial reporting for post-employment benefit plans, which is basically retiree health plan. So this is a two-step process here. GASB74 requires, since we're the plan administrator, to issue a set of financials. It's within your CAFER, it's not separate, so it's on pages 58 and 59 of your CAFER. It's a fiduciary fund for our purposes. And the real important thing is that next year, we'll have to implement GASB75, which requires us to put your outstanding retiree healthcare liability on your balance sheet. Okay? So that'll be interesting. Right now, we recognize $30 million of liability for our retiree health. That is just the amount of annual payment we should have made that we hadn't. So when we have to put this on your financial statements, we'll be adding about another $20 million of liability, because our current outstanding liability is about $50 million, which is down from $110 million several years ago before we addressed OPEB. So that's pretty nice that we were able to take care of it before it actually affects your financial statements. GASB77 was also implemented. This is a tax abatement disclosure. So these, for us, are sort of sales tax sharing agreements. The note on page, note 15 on page 118 of the CAFER will go into detail about as much detail- detail as we can because it's sales tax and a bit of that's confidential. We'll sort of tell you about our program a little bit. And it'll point out that the city for 1617 spent about $1.6 million in tax abatement programs or sales tax sharing agreements. So that is off of about $7.9 million of sales tax generated. So our agreements currently provide that we fund about 20% to the folks who participate in those programs. This year, we did another popular annual financial report, or PAFER. This is a condensed version of the city's CAFER that's meant to be more readable and easy for the general public to get an understanding of what we're doing with their money and why. It's, again, produced in-house. This is our third year and we won awards the first two years. And it's a pretty cool document. If you haven't read it, it's a pretty quick and helpful read. So whenever I give these presentations, we always focus on the general fund. And it's for important reasons, that's where most of your discretionary spending happens. But I thought it would be important to just give you guys an idea of how your general fund stacks up with the rest of your financial picture. So your general fund accounts for about 51% of your resources coming in, okay? So it's a little bit more than half of what you do. The other largest slice is your enterprise funds, right? So your sewer, water, wastewater, airport, and your golf course make up 24%. With special revenue funds making up the next largest piece at 12. Debt service, capital project, and internal service funds make up smaller slices. Special revenue funds are things like gas tax, they're regular continuing funding with strings attached, meaning that the money you receive can only spend on specific items. And so that's, those things are accounted for in what we call a special revenue fund. So just to give you an idea of the magnitude and why we always focus on the general fund. You can ask questions anytime if you want, you don't have to wait till the end. So I just want to remind you all of the plan that was adopted in June for the year ending June 30th, 201617, and for the fiscal year we're in. So what we thought back in, when we prepared the budget, which actually happened leading up to June, it was adopted in June, we thought that the city would be in the black for 1617 by about $4 million. And we also anticipated for the current year that we're in, we would actually be running in the negative. Part of that, and a significant piece of that, if you recall, is the flood damage. And being able to pay for basically what amounts to over $5 million in climbing damage that we're paying for basically out of accumulated reserves. So you adopted a budget that's not quite balanced because we didn't assume that revenues would grow to pay for that pretty expensive bit of repair. So this is what we had anticipated. So sort of an idea to refresh your mind. All right, so for our audited results, I just want to preface this with we had a good year. The economy is doing really well. And if you talk to me or Mark or most of the members of your staff, particularly the financial people, will tell you, we're at the height of the economy. And we've been telling you this for a while now. We believe that a slowdown is imminent. We got a sales tax report from our consultant yesterday that confirmed their projection is that everything will start to slow down a bit. Not necessarily a downturn, but definitely a slowing of our economy is on the horizon. So this is general fund revenues by source. So, you know, I talked to you a lot about this, just a reminder that sales tax and property tax are your two largest revenue sources. Other taxes, and so if you look to the right, this listing is basically the detail of what makes up your 27% other. Charges for services, 10%. Intergovernmental, so this is like motor vehicle and lieu fees, things that aren't quite taxes but aren't charges for services, make up 8%. Use of money and property, licenses and permits transfers in. So a lot of the development happens in here, that's charges for services. Other taxes also has a lot to do with what's happening in development-wise in the city because those include items like a business license tax, business license on construction, transient occupancy. It also includes things that have nothing to do with development, like your franchise tax and transfer tax. So that's just an overview of what your general fund revenue portfolio looks like. So general fund sources, budget versus actual. You'll see that for property tax, we estimated slightly under $30 million and we came out slightly more than $30 million, which was really nice. I think this is the first time that, being responsible for your budget, that I actually underestimated property tax. I think the past several years, I tend to have these two flipped where sales tax is a little bit over and property tax is under, okay? So property tax, sales tax underperformed our estimate by a little bit. You know, that's about what, 10th of a percent? So pretty good estimate and a lot of nice growth, having 30, almost 31 million of sales tax is awesome. Other revenue, we did really well. Came in over budget about 1.4. But the really interesting thing is overall, we beat the budget estimate by about 1.8. Other revenue and the real strength in this number comes from, again, development. That's charges for current services. It's also, the biggest overage was business license on construction and also transient occupancy tax did really well this year. And all those, those two items are specifically tied to development, okay? So just to give you an idea, this is, the mayor talked earlier tonight about the blue line and the red line. This chart's just the blue line. And it's to give you an idea that, where we are, you know, from the depths of the recession about when I started here to where we are now, to give you an idea that, hey, the economy is doing great. And it's softening out a little bit. You could, you could see the growth level out right here. And we anticipate that further softening. So this is the part of the economic cycle that you should be doing better than projections, that you should be able to bank resources for when the economy isn't doing so hot. There is a couple other consequences of the hot economy. I'll, I'll talk about a little bit further in the presentation. But we're definitely experiencing what I would consider the best of times as far as our economics here in town. So again, property tax is one of our main revenue sources. This is an economic lagging indicator. This is the, your largest revenue source that will take the longest time to adjust in an economic downturn. So just a reminder of what it is, you can see that even the growth here is, you can see it flattening a bit. And then sales tax, which is, again, it's a lagging indicator, but it's much closer to real time. So just a quick information, the green piece of these bars is the state replacing our sales tax with sales tax in lieu because of some financing they did called the triple flip. If you really want to understand the triple flip and why this exists, you come make an appointment with me, we'll spend about three hours, it'll be great. But that was basically sales tax in lieu to us. So we included a sales tax to give you an idea where we're going. Triple flip stopped last year, so that's why the bars going forward will not have green on them, okay? So one of the things that we found interesting was a development revenue and that it's a leading indicator of where the economy is going, all right? And so this is actually all of your development revenue, not just the general fund. So I want to point that out, all the other slides were just general fund. But this is all development revenue. And so you hit a max last year of about, you know, $43 million in development-related revenue. So by the way, the listing is in exact opposite order. Impact fees are the light green, connection fees are next, and so on. So the transient occupancy tax is on the bottom. So you'll see that last year, we collected about $43 million in development-related revenue. At the end of this year, we collected about $23 million. So just to give you an idea, when we talk about, we think the economy is cooling down and there's some slowing, this is one of the things that we see happening, your development-related revenue slowing down. That doesn't mean, by the way, that the folks in community development aren't busy. They're extremely busy because all of this work that's come in the door, they're busy doing now. So they're swamped. And anybody down there will tell you, what are you talking about, slowdown? The work is, is a mile deep and we're barely denting it because they're dealing with all the work that this created here, okay?
So I have a question you said to ask anytime. So what, what's the reason for that downturn? I mean, is it, is it really a leading indicator or is it because we're running out of places to develop?
You have a likely combination of events. One of the things is that it is a leading indicator. We expect this indicator to be about 36 months out in front of the, the actual economy. Because essentially, when somebody comes in for a permit at the front end, that's about the time from that moment until they actually sell something. So they're trying to predict the world about 36 months out. We don't think that land constraint is your main indicator here. There are also a variety of other things that happen at this point in the economic cycle. One of the most notable is costs go up and the spread between costs and revenue tightens. And we're starting to see that on a number of different fronts. So, one, the economy is starting to cool, but, but conversely, in a very tight labor market, that's starting to put some pressure to slow down development as well. Even though prices are rising on the revenue side, costs are rising even faster.
So that's an important concept to remember. It was one I was alluding to earlier. Because at this point in the economy, basically everything that we do is, is more expensive, or so it seems. And it seems to be playing out that way in our own construction projects. So, and this is a concept that we talked about several times about, hey, we'd like to make sure we save money so when the economy's not so hot and you might be able to get some good deals on construction projects, you'll have resources available. That's not when you want to be unable to spend on things like infrastructure repair and replacement, okay? So it was an interesting bit of data that was, we're sharing. So here's our uses for 1617. And you'll see, if you just go to the bottom, hey, we beat budget by 1.4 million, which is great. So, you know, couple that with your previous slide back here where, you know, your revenue was 1.8 more than anticipated and your expenses are 1.4 less. So, you know, you're the positive about 3.2 million more than you thought you would be. So we thought we would finish the year about $4 million in the black. Some simple math gets you to, we finished the year $7 million in the black, which is great. So let's take a look at what the expenses look like. So for, for our largest piece of expense, which is people, personnel, services, and supplemental personnel, we're slightly over budget. This has a lot to do with the timing of our labor contracts. So you may recall that we, we just finished bargaining with all four of our labor units, the only one that's not under contract, they'll be expiring soon, is your firefighters. But the other four groups have agreed. The only group that agreed enough time for us to incorporate estimates into the budget was the police department. So your Livermore Management Group, your Association of Livermore Employees, your police management group, which we were able to come to deals with towards the end of the fiscal year and which all kicked in in this fiscal year, we didn't have time to estimate those costs, incorporate them into your budget. So you're seeing that we're slightly over in personnel costs, okay? The fact that we're under supplies by a million dollars is really what's sort of creating this. Interesting thing there is that almost all that million dollars under budget is in community development and it's for contractual services. So, you know, what that's an indicator of is they're really busy and haven't gotten all the work that they intended to. And so my guess is that a bit of that million dollars is a timing difference. There's still things that you want done that have to do with land use and development and other things that will end up happening, it just didn't happen in 1617, okay? And my guess is that they'll end up spending, or want to spend a bit of that million dollars in this year or maybe the year after and they'll end up asking for some of it to be reprogrammed. And again, capital improvement, your CIP program underspent by about a half a million. And again, timing issue, my guess, and I believe that the folks in engineering are going to come back to you in December and ask to sort of reappropriate onspent money for projects they didn't quite get to, okay? So pretty good financial picture. So what you're showing is that, you know, again, we thought we'd be in the black by four, but we're in the black by a little bit more than seven. So, let's see, that does, here is a graphical display of your reserves and, and you'll see the large group growth in, on assigned by the $3 million, okay? So this is what your reserves look like. Your, your full general fund equity is about $54 million. Realize that a piece of that's non-spendable. This is the part that equals 54. Your reserve for economic, your committed reserve, again, this is for any sort of catastrophe, think earthquake or fire, 15% reserves, fully funded, economic uncertainty. You increased this last year from 11 and a half to 13 and a half. So we're now fully funded there. You had instructed us to put away $2 million a year for infrastructure replacement. Realize that you also directed us to do that for the next two years. So at 4 million of this 16 million, we'll eventually make it up on this line, okay? So at the end of this fiscal year, you've directed us to move $2 million into infrastructure repair and replacement reserve and $2 million the year after that, okay? And, excuse me, and another thing that'll eat away at this is the half a million of onspent CIP will get re-appropriated and, so that's not showing on here and some other work. So realize that this looks really nice and, you know, you should be pretty proud of this. But the, the numbers on the screen are smaller than they appear. You're, a couple bad events from burning through this money. And, you know, it was interesting, you saw the wildfire stuff up in Santa Rosa and I was watching, it was maybe day three of the event and it was on the news in the morning. And they're talking about, you know, that the county assessor was going to provide immediate relief to the taxpayers. And they were going to take and assess their property down to just land. And how fair is that, right? Because, you know, if there's no house there burned down and these people are going to, you know, struggle to recover. About a third of their city burned, right? And so you look at that, that's going to punch a hole in their property tax budget about $4 million a year, okay? And it'll take about three to four years to rebuild that stuff. That's, you know, burning through 12 million bucks real quick. That's just property tax. That has nothing to do with all the lost sales tax or other business income. So when you look at your reserve of 14 million, that's really nice, but it could be gone really quickly. So, you know, this is terrific that we have the reserves, but there's some tension here. The other thing that Mark noted was during this part of the economy, everything's a lot more expensive. And we've noticed that with our CIP. When we're, we're getting bids in on projects, they're coming in higher significantly than engineer estimates. So realize a lot of the things that need to be built, that you've approved to be built, will probably cost us more than we thought.
Yeah, I've, I've even heard of engineering estimates, some firms building in a 40% contingency because they just don't know.
Concrete, right?
Yeah, concrete, especially the flat work, it's just, it's ridiculous, so.
We've had our estimates on some of our projects rise 20% in the last eight months. So it is that part of the cycle. You hate to wish for a cooling of the market. And unfortunately, the natural disasters about have made that situation a little worse on the, on the labor front. The other thing to keep in mind is when people sort of say there's a disaster, that somebody will come bail you out, the federal government, and they do help when physical objects are destroyed. They certainly take a percentage of that and help you with that. But they never come back in and backfill revenue, which is lost. So that's the piece that's 100% us, no matter what the size or scale of that impact, it's always 100% on the local government to deal with all of that.
There's another thing to mention here is the, the asset management work being done. I mean, we have a large problem there. And it, with you're talking about these costs escalating, it just got even worse if you start thinking about the problem. So this is a small, very small number compared to what we're facing there. So I mean, we, I think that, you know, I never get overjoyed by this because if you put it in perspective, we still have a long way to go to get comfortable that we're actually on a, on a solid financial footing when you think about the obligations we're facing.
Even without disasters.
Agreed. So I just like to make sure everyone gets it. When I show a number like this, people get really excited and it's, you should, it's wonderful, but you should also be a little bit concerned and cautious. So this is a comparison of your general fund reserves versus last year. There's nothing magic or secret here. You planned on having a $4 million in the black here, you had a seven, your reserves grew by $7 million, okay? Okay? All right. So, let's talk about the first quarter of the year we're in. So, you know, the budget you adopted was, hey, we thought we would be in the red by about, you know, one point two million dollars. This is usually where I say, hey, too hard to judge revenues, because revenues are not cyclical, or as cyclical as our expenses are. So, we put together a different piece of data to show you. I think last time I came, you guys said, well, that's great, why don't you compare the first three months, first, the first three months of the past, to give you an idea of whether we're doing okay or not, because it's hard to judge against a whole budget, because revenue typically comes in later in the fiscal year. So, this gives you an idea. This is data going back to the fiscal year two thousand. So, we have collected more revenue for the first three months than we ever have. The closest we came was two thousand four, five. I wasn't here then, I'm not quite sure what that spike is, maybe somebody else might be able to explain to you. But, basically, where we've been is hovering a little bit under ten percent in most years, and it dips, and it comes up, and it dips, and it comes up. So, the fact that we're at about ten percent the first quarter of the year is fairly normal. Okay? So, you know, we've collected more revenue than we have in the past, and more than we did at this point last year. But honestly, as a percentage, this is pretty standard. It's shaping up to be a decent year, but there's nothing strange about where we are for the first three months revenue-wise. It looks pretty solid. Okay? So, expenses are a lot easier to look at on a quarterly basis.
Just a second.
Sure.
You just showed the last couple of years, and we're kind of in the range, but you've got this as a longer range. What do you got to say about that percentage in the first part of the graph?
So, say that.
You, you pointed out in the last few years, we're kind of running around ten percent.
Yeah, I don't.
I bet you didn't say anything about what happened there.
Yes, because I don't know. I wasn't here.
That's a good reason not to say anything.
Sure. They, they clearly thought their revenue was going to be a lot lower. Right? Because, you know, they, they collected fourteen percent of the revenue at that point, and it was only six million. I, I'm not exactly sure. So.
It was about the time of the Silicon Valley boom starting to cool, but.
Hmm. It's interesting.
Around three and four, but, yeah, maybe they didn't think the Silicon Valley boom was sustainable.
But, yeah, but there's a major trend there going down, and then, then it popped up and we're kind of stable. So, I don't know what, I mean, you, you haven't thought about what this really means.
No, I have not. So, I, what was interesting to me is, is the most recent history. If you would like to know this, I can definitely look in to what was driving the revenue in the first three months in the past.
Well, just in the sense of, you know, what kind of comfort level we have, we can see here that this thing can be much lower, and it has implications. So, just, what kind of risk are we facing if you were to think about what history has said?
Okay. So, the expense side's a little easier, because, you know, our largest expense happens every two weeks, so it's pretty easy to judge. With a quarter, folks, folks think, hey, we're twenty-five percent of the way through the year, but we have twenty-six pay periods. So, realize, we're actually only, for our, our largest seventy-five percent of the general fund expenses, actually only twenty-three percent of the way through the fiscal year. So, we're doing pretty good against the estimate, you know, for both of our items that are payroll related, we're, we're under the twenty-three percent, so that's terrific. So, you understand one of the reasons why we're a little, they're not exactly in sync. Some of it has to do with the nature of the payments and supplemental, they're not as, as normal as, as a payroll. Things like workers' comp contributions don't necessarily happen every two weeks like a, a pay does, and that's a actual significant piece of our supplemental personnel services has to do with things like workers' comp, or items that we might make sporadic payments into. Supplies and services, we're at a pretty good place, we're a quarter of the way through the year, and only about twenty percent spent. Capital outlay is an interesting thing, this is a lease of some equipment. And so, the actual doesn't show up here. For budgetary purposes, you want to show the use of a resource, but when you actually pay a lease payment, you're, you're really, there's a piece of it that's interest, but most of it's switching, you know, it's a balance sheet transaction. Okay? Capital improvement, you know, we budgeted four point seven, and, you know, nowhere near making that. And other financing sources, we, our uses, it's just early in the year. So. All right. For our concerns, these are really pretty constant concerns. It's your employer-related costs, you know, it's CalPERS, and, you know, we're expecting crushing increases in CalPERS rates over the next five years. That should be no secret to, to the five of you, and it shouldn't be to the public at this point. So, CalPERS is going to pose a significant challenge to us financially. Interest, in variable rate interest, remember, you know, we, we were holding, we've borrowed quite a bit of money in its variable rate, so we are exposed to rising interest rates. The item on there that we talked about a little bit earlier, infrastructure replacement's still on there, it's a significant problem. We've saved a little bit of money for it. The, the items that we are getting to are costing more than we anticipated cost of the economy. So, these are all challenges you face. All right. So, as part of your annual financial update in the end of last fiscal year, you have an HCIF policy that says you'll get an update on HCIF. And so, we, we talked about this over the summer, we changed the policy a little bit, and, and I sort of alluded to, we're going to have a, a normal spot where we talk about this every year. So, I would like to, you know, delve right into HCIF, Host Community Impact Fee. This is money that comes to the city as a special revenue, right? So, at the beginning, I showed that pie chart, there's a special revenue funds, so it's a special revenue, it can only be spent on certain things. We have several kinds of Host Community Impact Fee here. There's open space, there's recycling education, and then there's the arts. So, this is specifically about the arts and not the other ones. Okay? And this has to do with the city buying the bankhead. All right? So, you may remember the, the policy and this purpose was to preserve the city's financial flexibility throughout the life of the bankhead performing arts financing. It's to mitigate potential revenue shortfalls. It's also so that we can absorb fiscal impacts to, to market interest rate changes. And it's also now that you own the building, and as a landlord, you're responsible for the maintenance on the building, significant maintenance to it. So, you may recall, we had a study done by a consultant called HFH that came in and looked at our tipping fees, or, or Host Community Impact Fees, and, and this was the projection they gave us. And it's important to note that this reflects San Francisco signing up with recology and, and no longer bringing their waste to the, the landfills out here. And, so this was their projection for what would happen, and the red line is actually what's happening. Okay? So, the consult was pretty good. You know, there's a, a little bit of time where we weren't quite getting what they thought we would, but now we're getting a little bit more than they thought we would, but pretty much not a bad projection so far. But, time will tell whether this happens. So, so far, the report's proven to be pretty accurate. All right? Here are your interest rates, and this are monthly interest rates, you know, since the time we issued the, the debt, and what's being paid now. Okay? So, this was one of the pieces I was most concerned about, and it had stated, you know, that although everything looked great if interest rates stayed really low, these are small fluctuations if you, you look at, you know.
Yeah, I was about to point that out, that's the scale on the left.
The scale on the left.
It goes up one percent.
So, realize in, in fifteen sixteen, we paid ten, almost eleven thousand dollars of interest. In sixteen seventeen, we, we paid fifty-nine thousand. Okay? And, and that's just from the minor fluctuation, because the scale makes it look big, but it's a small fluctuation. That was, you know, an extra fifty grand in expense for that minor fluctuation. Okay? So, the other thing that we were concerned about was estimating and, and saving for replacement, repair and replacement costs. And so, you remember, we, we said, hey, these are the things you should pay for, and on average, you should be putting away about a hundred and eight grand a year, and because the building's so old and there's no reserve, we should have a catch-up function. So, realize, oops, we're actually in year three, which means if all this was going swimmingly, you ought to have a cumulative amount in your HCIF fund that equals or exceeds five hundred and eighty-three thousand. Right? So, you don't. The fund balance is actually five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, or fifty-five thousand short. So, this is where we're heading, you'll notice the gap is growing. The first year, we actually had more than we needed, and, and slowly, now we have less and less. So, to give, that is sort of my summary of where you're at with HCIF and the expenses that go along with it. Do you guys have any questions? That would conclude my presentation for this evening.
Do you have a projection on these numbers?
I am not a garbage expert, but if I was going to give you a projection, it would look like that. Because we paid somebody who is, and they said, this is where it'll go.
Well, assuming that the revenue does actually, what, what our consultant noted, HFNH noted there, the, the issue, the, the largest variable is going to be how quickly the items in the bankhead itself actually wear out and have to be replaced. That's, that's the one where, what we concluded to you when we came forward with the acquisition is that, basically, dealing with, with both the interest, the principal, and essentially the replacement costs on this, we would likely run negative over the long term, and it would be a relatively modest number over the overall acquisition.
We're always trying to go, I, I kind of understand that, but I go back to the, the line, if I could, I know. That, that presumes, you know, we always talk about economic cycles, that, that looks like no downturn.
That's a smooth, that's a smooth average number.
Right? So, this is not likely to just go up from there, and then, given that we've got a little bit of shortfall, I mean, it is more likely to have a shortfall than an overage, is what I'm kind of guessing, given that, if we have any kind of economic downturn here.
Yes, and your projection is over the long run to be slightly negative at the end of the entire process.
Yeah, but that's.
Assuming a flat.
Assuming that.
And then if you basically assume the normal cycle in there, there will be particular years where you will be more negative.
Right, because, but you're not likely to go above that one.
I had a question about variable versus fixed interest rates. There's a lot more, obviously, more certainty in fixed, are they harder to come by, or?
No, it's just more expensive. So, we could switch to a fixed rate, but you're going to pay a, a several percentage point premium to have that certainty. So, as, as long as we believe there's going to be a low interest rate environment.
Okay.
You, you're saving a whole lot of money.
Sure.
Staying in, in variable rate. When, if we get to a point where we think we're going to be in a steadily increasing interest rate environment. I'll be back in front of you saying, hey, it's time to finance into something that's fixed.
Okay.
Yes. So, I monitor that a lot. It's, it's one of the things I, I spend a lot of time and effort making sure that we're still on the right side of that. But it is a lot of estimating and.
Sure.
Being able to tell where the future goes, so.
Your crystal ball, right?
Well, right. So, so far, we've done extremely well as, as a city, and maybe your reserves reflect that, because had you had fixed rate over that time period, you certainly would have spent tens of millions more on debt service.
Okay, thanks.
So, we, we've talked about this over the years, and, but one thing we haven't gotten clear is kind of what your thresholds are for when you would come back to us. I mean, this is kind of, you're right, you've said you would, but we haven't. I'm, I'd be interested in like, what has to, how much does this stuff have to move before you're back in front of us? And of course, you're trying to guess what the Fed's going to do, and too, but, I, you know, just, as time goes on, and the number of years I've seen this, and it's hard to believe interest rates are going to stay low for a long time. So, I think being more clear on what the triggers are, that, that would be helpful. I mean, not an immediate thing, but at, at, you know, sometime, coming back with a little bit more of a explanation of how you really are going to do this when things start moving against us would be helpful.
Sure. It's, it's not a very easy thing to define. You don't want to say, hey, once interest rates hit a certain spot, that's it, because they might be temporary. Look, we had a presidential election that forced the interest rates up for about two months, and, and then they came right back down. So, so part of it is, you have to be able to foresee.
So, so what I'm not saying, we need to do it at this hour.
Understood.
But what I'm, I'm saying, I would like to understand it, because I do share the, the concern's been raised over time, and we've kind of been okay because the rates have been low, but just a little bit more preparation for what's going to happen, and we think about it, could be helpful at some appropriate time in some future meeting.
All right. Okay. Well, the, the HCIF slide is up. It'd be interesting, maybe next year, to see, how, how far back do we have data on the HCIF in terms of the revenue generated? I see it starts here at twenty twelve. I'd just be, it, it would be interesting to note how that performs based on the economy in general, because I, I was thinking about it, that, you know, the HCIF revenue that's based on tipping fees, how sensitive is that to the economy? I mean, people are still generating trash even in down economic times. Plus, does the HCIF have an escalator? So, it hasn't, there's that built into as well. I was just trying to kind of mentally work through, you know, as somebody who's an expert, I mean, not an expert, but an expert projected this, I've rarely seen charts where it's just, you know, straight up.
So, there are four different things that inter-impact and interrelate with each other. One is actual trash produced per capita, and that has a trending down as percentage, but the good news is our overall base is growing. So, even though we recycle, you know, seventy percent of our trash, we produce way more than we used to, that's the great news about that. So, even, even though we recycle seventy percent, there's still quite a chunk of it out there. Population growth, expected CPI, and all of those are basically, we did essentially several different scenarios, and I believe this is the base case, that is sort of the middle scenario on this. But you're right, what that does is that homogenizes your economic cycles, and you are exactly right. Trash depends on the economy. When the economy drops dramatically, so does trash production, because it has a lot to do with commercial packaging, and essentially, those discretionary purchases drop dramatically, that's why sales tax is your most volatile of your big items. People just don't buy stuff with the packaging, and that's sort of one of the things that impacts it. But we could certainly, I think we do have some revenue through, experience through the last recession, we can show what the HCIF did.
Just maybe for the future chart, but I also appreciate the air quotes for the recycling, because I know that's how many people are going down to the smaller trashcans by a more liberal definition of what's recyclable and, and what isn't, so.
Well, so, construction debris is another thing, that when the economy starts to go down, construction debris falls off, and that's a large part also, it goes into the landfill.
If, if I could ask, just, Doug, could you explain, I believe I saw in one of the early slides, you're just going back to the original CAFR, that we were rated unqualified, is that correct?
No, so you had an unqualified opinion.
Okay.
Which although that sounds bad, that's.
No, that's what I wanted to point out, that is an outstanding rating, and I'm just really pleased to see that word whenever I see a CAFR. It's just, kudos to you and staff for, for putting this together, that's a, a real significant doing. So, thank you much.
I appreciate that. Usually I explain it because most people see that, and the un makes it seem negative.
Well, it looks like, yeah, it looks like it'd be a negative, but actually, it's about as good as it gets.
It's a good thing. Any other questions?
Just a comment, but I'll, I'll save that for after public comment.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. Great report, very well done, good understandability, thank you very much. We have one comment card, Mr. Stein.
John Stein, thirteen thirty-four, Kathy Court. A good report, great times, it's nice to see surpluses rather than deficits. Looks like, at least for another year, we'll probably see that. There are two things, I think, that will help in strategic planning that are really not explicitly called out well in the report. The first is the history of the split between benefits and the actual salary paid to the employees. And is that growing or decreasing? Are we still seeing more and more CalPERS increases that add on, and higher medical costs? It would be nice to see that ratio for long-term planning. And the other thing for strategic planning would be sort of a, a balance sheet showing not only, you know, specific funds, but also the entire general city assets versus liabilities. We see our reserves growing, but also our unfunded maintenance costs, and capital replacement costs are growing. The costs for long-term pension benefits. The costs for long-term pension benefits are probably growing. We're sort of like the python that swallowed the pig. Eventually that will go down as the new contract agreements start taking effect. But it would be nice to know how that, how that's changing over time. That's sort of a, not a snapshot, but a long-term sort of a movie of, of how the city is doing. It would just be, be interesting to see and are we, are we getting better at more assets versus liabilities? Are we holding our own or the unfunded liabilities and pension costs? Maybe we didn't swallow a pig, we swallowed an alligator. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Okay, you had a comment?
Oh, yeah, just a quick comment about the PAFER. That's one of my favorite, what was it, two years ago you started that?
This is our third year.
And it's, it's amazing that you're doing all the graphics in-house as well. One, one of the things that I, I, I assume you already said you produce that in-house?
Yes, we do. Actually, my finance manager has a very creative side and she does all of the graphic design.
You don't want to think about creative financing though, right?
No, no.
I think it's one of her releases for all the hard work she does with the technical crunching.
She even had the reflection of the bus in that one picture and I noticed that. But one of the things that I do is I make sure I extract that from the PDF every year. Because whenever I get questions from residents or, you know, people angry at me for whatever, I just say, hey, read this. You know, it's easy to understand and it, it, it just outlines everything. It's a very useful, in particular, the, the last page with all the contact information for the city. That's a, that's a great, you know, I've, I've also extracted that page and have given it to people, so. Thank you for putting that together, it's, it's a really nice document.
I give them the budget. I give them the budget. Here, read this.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Okay, so to adopt the resolution, do I have a motion to, to adopt?
I'll make the motion to adopt the, the report.
Motion is made by the Vice Mayor.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Carling. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say it's another, you know, great job.
Great job.
Well done.
Thank you.
Very good. All in favor of the motion, say if I'm saying aye.
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 Any opposed, abstentions? Pass unanimously. Judging by the hour, we will pass on the committee reports. Anybody will do one, is it too late to do a matters initiated or just move ahead? I think I heard that there's, there was a pending matters initiated.
It's up to the pleasure of the council. So if you want, so Mr. Mayor and Mr. Councilors, if you want to continue for matters initiated, you can.
I, I'll waive the committee reports, but I think that there was someone who wanted to do a matters initiated.
Yeah, if I can remember, I, I think the, the point was to the, to the extent that we, you know, we learned something about the, the parking, I wanted to get things going on the demolition of the buildings that are going to have to go. So if he could come back with some kind of schedule of what, what we're looking at.
Like the Dan Studio and the like.
Could we provide the council a memo on that? And then with that, basically you can give us further direction.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Could staff provide the council a memo on that and with that you could provide us further direction?
Perfect, just, just.
Very good.
The point is, do we, is there anything that we have to do in order to get going on that? Because again, we don't want to delay, once we make a decision and say, oh, now we got to grind through a bunch of stuff. So just make sure that we're prepared to move once we make a decision.
Okay, with that, there being no further business, adjourn the meeting to a regular meeting on November, November twenty-seventh. So happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank y'all for what you do.
Thank you.
TV twenty-nine serving the cities of Dublin, Livermore and Pleasanton, your connection to the Tri-Valley. TV twenty-nine serving the cities of Dublin, Livermore and Pleasanton, your connection to the Tri-Valley. Tune into TV twenty-nine for information about your local government. Watch the Dublin City Council Meeting, the Livermore City Council Meeting and the Pleasanton City Council Meeting, live right here on TV twenty-nine, your connection to the Tri-Valley.
We are the spark that'll light the fire that'll burn the first order down. This is not going to go the way you think. Fulfill. I need someone to show me my place in all this.
Built into methamphetamine is this violence. Because if you're under the influence of speed and you want to do something, no one's going to stop you. You're going to make it happen.
Watch your back, man. It's a good day to die. It's them, not you.
Do it.
You're late again, son.
Where methamphetamine goes, violence follows.
Police say this man had been robbing stores in San Diego since June tenth. At least sixteen armed robberies in all. Inside a canvas bag in the trunk detectives found a pistol.
Methamphetamine gives you the illusion that you can do anything, that you're smart and capable and competent and fearless.
Twenty-three-year-old Stephen Leslie can't turn back time. Can't change the grinding collision he caused last December thirtieth. Can't bring back the life of his victim, nineteen-year-old Jeremy Turner.
Everything's flat out, hundred miles an hour, there's no time to, to pull back or to consider.
When Leslie crashed into Turner last December, he had been drinking and using methamphetamine, driving up to ninety-four miles an hour on Watt Avenue. And the Turner family says their strong faith allows them to forgive Stephen Leslie.
The human race has never been exposed to a drug that could take over ninety out of a hundred people in a matter of weeks.
The judge said, though this was a car accident, this is as close to murder as it gets. Leslie won't be eligible for parole for sixteen years.
But it's too late now, your life has changed. It's happened, it's done.
Hey Dad, look at this.
The people involved in this are concerned about one thing, and that's money. They don't care about the environment and they don't care what they do or who they hurt.
We came in at about two thousand feet. It's what we call high cover for the guys on the ground.
The helicopter located a shed attached to a small camper trailer near a pond area on the property.
The helicopter came in and actually scared the cook crew, which was in the midst of a cook at that time.
While they were hovering over that location, they also observed people running out of this shed area and get into this truck and start leaving the property.
Pickup truck comes barreling up the road and there's a break in the fence which makes a gate and passes through that gate and attempts to go around the caravan. I ordered the car to stop and it didn't, I had to jump out of the way.
He tried to ram me, so I got in my car and blocked the truck's exit.
We lowered the helicopter to high, high descent rate and ended up coming down very close to where these people were, were trying to leave on the dirt road.
Making methamphetamine is a dangerous process. The processes can be explosive, they can produce toxic clouds. It can contaminate the whole environment. We noticed a large amount of crystalline residue, which is consistent with waste product being dumped. The trailer was up on a hill, a little bit above a small pond. In that pond was a large hydrochloric gas cylinder.
This pond looked like a cesspool. That pond, I think, was only there about two years. And within that two years, it turned from a beautiful swimming hole and beach area to a place you wouldn't want to walk your dog.
Someone noticed a dead tree in the middle of a group of live trees. And that ended up having quite a bit of finished product that was still wet, stashed inside.
People not only pollute society by dropping the drugs on our street, they literally pollute society. They'll dump these hazardous wastes in your backyard. They'll dump them in the streets, down the water drains. Oftentimes, there are children, maybe neighbors' kids over playing, right where they've dumped this waste product. We come in and we clean up those sites, we wear the protective suits, we wrap ourselves with duct tape and wear the breathing apparatus. We're not going to take a chance. These chemicals have been rated so dangerous. These people don't care.
The cleanup at this place was, was staggering. In the back of my mind, I'll always think there's something out there that'll be found in, in the future.
The way the law is set up, the, the landowner is responsible, whether he knows it or not, what's taking place on his property, he's responsible for.
Some of the innocent victims, of course, are the children. I mean, one of the things that we, in this country, we've got to do is start paying a whole lot more attention to what's happening with the children of drug abusers. Those children need as much or more treatment than the mothers did or the fathers did.
Instead of doing simple discipline, they get carried away with the discipline. And that's what happens with somebody when they're on speed. And so once you hit the person, it actually feels good because it's a release of the tension. So you feel good in doing it and you forget about what you're doing and you just do it. And that's why the child abuse is a lot worse than it would be probably normally.
We know that in child abuse homicides and domestic violence homicides, that it's not just an explosion of violence, that violence is escalating over a period of time. not just an explosion of violence, that violence is escalating over a period of time.
One example is a little girl who was scalded to death in a tub of hot water. And you read a story like that, you see it on the news, and you say, wait a minute, what is happening to society?
Obviously, a four-year-old is outmanned, outgunned, is defenseless, and she stayed with her aunt and her uncle for the last six months of her life. Unfortunately, prior to that six months, she had lived with her mother, and her mother had to give her up because of methamphetamine use. And somehow this little child, Jenny Rojas, ends up with her aunt and uncle, and they also were chronic methamphetamine users. They'd used it all their lives. They had never had a job, yet they had six children, and they lived in filthy conditions, not even feeding their own children because the meth was more important to them than their, than, than what we know as humanity. The utter condition of the apartment with cockroaches and lice, it was just utterly disgusting. It was the worst crime scene I had ever seen. These people were on a binge for three or four days during this use of meth. They were also torturing and mutilating little Jenny Rojas, and it is unfathomable and unimaginable, the types of torture they inflicted on her little body. Burned her with a blow dryer or a curling iron, hung her in a closet, or stuffed her in a box, and finally, on the last fateful day of her life, they immersed her in a tub of boiling hot water and literally burned the skin off of her body, and then took another hit of meth and let her die.
It is costing the San Diego County Government, which is a $2 billion budget, $525 million in direct costs, drugs alone. Methamphetamine, the number one drug on that list. The methamphetamine strike force was collaboration, and it came as a response to an epidemic, and we came together as a team, and it was law enforcement and public safety and health and schools, and now we have a methamphetamine strike force that is responding as a community to the scourge.
You need prevention, you need intervention, you need enforcement, introduction, and you need treatment.
One of our core responsibilities in terms of strike force function was in the area of education and public awareness. And of course, the only way that you're really going to get that message out is by way of the press, and I think we've done a good job with that.
San Diego County Meth.
One of the indicators of success has been our methamphetamine hotline. Whatever the issue was, you could call that number and get referred for any single one of those services. If you're a school teacher and you think there's a kid who may be having some problems with methamphetamine, and you call that hotline to get him treatment, that helps. So what has happened is success for the hotline has been more than 50 arrests from coming from over 1,700 phone calls, more than 500 phone calls coming in for drug treatment, and lots of information.